Good morning, everyone. We will now call to order the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, July 22nd. Would the clerk please call the board to establish a quorum?
Yes, good morning. Supervisors Desmond Rodriguez, Hume, and you have a quorum.
Will the clerk please read the cable statement?
Yes. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is live and recorded with closed captioning. It is cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. It is also livestreamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov, and today's meeting will be repeated Friday, July 25th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14 and viewed at youtube.com/MetroCable14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your comment. Comments made by the public during Board of Supervisors meetings may include information that could be inaccurate or misleading, particularly concerning topics related to public health, voter registrations, and elections. The County of Sacramento does not endorse or validate the accuracy of public statements made during these open public forums. The recordings are shared to provide transparency and access to the proceedings of public meetings. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda or off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment, and if a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. Off-agenda public comments will take place for a maximum of 30 minutes. The remainder of the agenda comments will take place at the conclusion of the meeting in the afternoon. You may send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov, and your comments will be routed to the board and filed in the record. And if you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff or assistants, or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451, or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you. Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance). To the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God and despicable with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, there is one announcement that items 54 and 55 are being held until 2:00 PM. And clerk, will you please call the first item?
Yes. Our first item are public comments relating to matters not on the posted agenda. Our first speaker is Sarah Singleton.
And if I can just ask that individuals who are next in line, please be prepared to speak, and just be like the next three people. Thank you.
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Sarah Singleton. I'm a social worker of 25 years here in Sacramento County. I'm also the vice chair of the UPE 008 governing board. I'm here to talk about our contract negotiations, which are stalled at the moment. And I'd like to talk again about social worker salaries and our equity raises. As you know, I talked about it last time, we are 7% below the median of comparable counties. And, you know, I don't understand why social worker, or why Sacramento County wants to be kind of at the bottom of this salary survey. So, DCFAS, I know that there's a budget that they have to follow, but I feel like their priorities may be a little backward. They've had enough money to create a whole new division within CPS. They've had enough money to create this big behemoth division called QMAS that works in quality assurance and policy development, which is comprised of 90% managers. So somehow, there's always money for managers, and now there's no money for social workers. I know in the last year's budget, we lost in CPS 14 social workers, and we gained one program manager. I don't know how that happens. We're just always expected to do more with less. We are valuable employees, we work very hard, and, you know, I remind you what CPS social workers have to go through. We see hurt children, we see dying children. Recently, I went to a home several times, knocked on the door, called, texted, and they never opened the door for me. And I thought, okay, I'll close it. Well, it turns out, two weeks later, there was a double murder in the house. So I'm real happy that they didn't open the door that day for me. But anyway, we'd just like to have you remember, social workers, we worked very hard for you and for our community, and we would like our salaries at least in line with our comparable counties.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. And if Jennifer, Seth, and Zach can be ready to speak, thank you.
Hi. My name is Jennifer Zeff. I'm a HIST 2 with DHA. Thank you for this opportunity to be heard. Supervisor Serna didn't even bother to phone it in today. I'm disappointed. When I became disabled in 2013, I gave up an 18-year career that I loved with San Oslo County. I had to move back to Sacramento to be closer to my family, and I struggled often. I had to choose between paying bills or buying medications. I'm not alone. I can't participate in health savings program because I'm on Medicare. Any change to our healthcare benefits would be devastating. I came to work for Sacramento County for a chance to have a livable wage, good benefits, as well as make a difference in my community. When you contact our departments on behalf of your constituents, you expect us to handle the issue expeditiously, with courtesy, and to the best of our capability. Right now, that call is coming from inside the House. We are your constituents, as well as county employees. Sacramento County seems excessively top-heavy, with little focus on staff training and retention. Morale is low. Supervisor Rodriguez, you addressed the youth council about adding education on human trafficking to your agenda, or to their agenda, rather. I'd like to invite you all to visit all of our departments on your own time, as I am doing today here, to see what UPE 008 and UPE 005 do. We deal with the most vulnerable populations, victims of crimes, homelessness, mental health issues, elderly. There is a saying, "A chain is only as strong as its weakest link." The same is true about community. We don't expect to become rich doing this work. We also don't expect that while being full-time employed with the County of Sacramento to face homelessness, financial devastation by skyrocketing costs that our wages don't match or keep up with, we need a fair contract, and we need it now. Thank you. Thank you, Phil Serna, for showing up.
Seth?
Hello, my name is Seth Hogan. I am a HIST worker at East Commerce. My job is eligibility for our most vulnerable population, and I don't want to throw a bunch of numbers at you. I see that you guys do get confused with those. I also don't want to come up here and talk about a decision that you guys should have made months ago, because it's the right decision. What I want to talk to you about is the fact that you think that you have the right to take away our right to choose our healthcare. My wife and I are currently in the IVF process to create a family here in Sacramento County. We love this county. We've been here a long time. And losing those benefits is an atrocious miscarriage of what we voted you in for. And you are voted positions, and how dare you think that you can take away the healthcare options that we have worked so hard to come up with and choose? And you think that just making this change is a monetary decision? But for most of the people here, even in this room, it is a life-or-death decision. And you're also not paying us enough to come up with the difference. This is insanity and incredible amount of incompetence. I can't believe you guys would think that healthcare is something that you can just mess around with. I can't believe you think that doing this is in any way good faith. And the fact that we have been arguing for you people to do the right thing and give us a fair contract, don't take away our healthcare, is just absurd. Have a good day. Thank you.
Zach?
My name is Zach Holitz. I'm a union member with UPE 008, and I'm also here to discuss the situation with our contract. Now, I love the city that we're in, I love the county that we live in, and because I love this place, I pay my taxes so that it can be better. Because I want to love this place well, I pay for health insurance, and because I want to be able to love this place long after I'm able to do the work anymore, I put money away for a pension. After I do all of those things, my take-home pay for what I earn is roughly 67%. Now, my take-home, right now, is about $40,916 per year. The Board of Supervisors' last increase was over $46,000. So your last increase is more than I take home for a year's worth of my labor. Your proposed increase, which for someone like me would amount to about 2.8% of my yearly income, is not enough money for me to afford a studio apartment on average in Sacramento for even a month. So your proposed best and final offer does not afford me the opportunity to have a bedroom for a month's time. On top of that, your best and final offer takes away more than it gives. You want to take away the certainty that we have the right to grieve for our family members should something happen to them. It takes away the security that we have for our elected health benefits, and it takes away our rights, namely, our rights to strike when we are in these positions where we cannot come to an agreement on what you think is best for us. We had almost 1,000 people gathered outside and inside this building two weeks ago to voice that opinion and to exercise that right, and we are still here with no new news and no better offers. And I just don't understand why it is that we have to make these concessions and take this time to have this conversation. I believe that we can make reasonable adjustments and give fair pay to the people who do the work on the ground floor, and that's why we're all gathered here today. So thank you for your time, and thank you for hearing us.
James?
My name is James Ostrowski, and I'm working, I am an assessor with the assessor's office. So I just wanted to start by recapping some of the living wage information that you heard a couple weeks ago with you, but I wanted just to make sure you get the numbers. Living wage for a single person in Sacramento County is $55,000. The living wage for one adult, one child, is over $101,000. The living wage for one adult, two children, is over $125,000. And just so you know, there are still people who are married, there are two working adults with three children, they each need to make over $85,000 each. And this information comes from MIT. Just so you know, the county executive raise was above a single person's living wage in this county. Our last three contracts did not keep up with inflation. I mean, our last three-year contract did not keep up with inflation. The loss was 5.7% after the actual numbers for the CPU came in. I have this text, I have this release that the assessor's office made recently, a couple weeks ago, and I'm sure you've all seen it, and it shows the growth over this county over the last 10 years going up. I mean, this past year was 5.41%. So that shows us, and the growth is only going higher. But the release was made, and I just want to point that out. I have a college degree, and I've been with this county for over 25 years. One of the few things that have kept me in this county is healthcare with this county job. You are going to lose skilled, very knowledgeable employees. They are usually the first to go when something bad happens to their paychecks or their healthcare. It's the smartest that can move, the smartest that can leave, and they can go to other counties or private sectors that other counties have the exact same jobs we have here, so they can leave. And we have lost people in the past because of the pay. We have lost people in our office who are highly skilled, very knowledgeable people. They've left for other counties because the pay was higher and their benefits were better. Just so you know, we are the capital of California. We are the kings. We're growing, got international airport. We have, Arco Arena is going to have a teaching hospital, 2,500 homes. So just so you know, we deserve better than the average. Thank you.
My name is Holly Tolbert. I am a resident of Del Paso Manor and a resident of District 3. Slumlord, that is the word spray painted across the squatter's house less than a mile from my home. Blighted abandoned buildings, homeless camps, trash, and drug usage now plague my once beautiful area. Nearby businesses are suffering while Taylor's property managers are given wide latitude. Calls for attention from the sheriff and the code enforcement department have skyrocketed. Over 100 service calls to the Watanabe Comino Corridor in a year. Once the heart of our community, the country club area, has now become a new version of Citrus Heights' Sayonara Drive. The county and District 3 have repeatedly turned a blind eye to the country club plaza's many code enforcement violations, leaking roof, homeless encampments, and now a new discovery of toxic mold. The old abandoned Sam's Restaurant is now a mecca for homeless camps and people daily going there to do drugs. The abandoned union bank and one community center now have graffiti smashed out windows and doors. Their buildings are blocks from an elementary school. The common theme here seems to be lack of nuisance abatement. But why is the question? These abandoned buildings and absent landlords get a letter from our county code enforcement that never leads to any fines or actual consequences for the owners. The buildings remain crime-infested eyesores for our community. The code enforcement operation repeatedly closed and then has to start all over again. In an email dated yesterday from the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department, I was told that I'm not really seeing what I am seeing, that they disrespectfully disagree with our assertion that there are massive problems in our area, and that the description of daily drug dealing, vandalism, and uncontrolled camps does not reflect what we are currently observing in these locations. They assert that our area really isn't out of control, like we are saying. I have recorded and logged hundreds of hours of footage in my area for about nine months now, and I respectfully disagree. Oh, there are big problems. We know what the problems are and who are creating them. We are telling you, and you are not listening. Today, I speak for my fellow neighbors of Arden Arcade, and we ask you, Mr. Desmond, to do something. We are asking you to do more than send a letter to these out-of-town vacant negligent building owners. A letter does nothing. It's time for fines. Citrus Heights used multiple California city codes to sue Sunrise Mall. It's time we do the same. Stop giving these absent landlords a pass. Thank you.
Excuse me. Supervisor Desmond?
Briefly, Mr. Chair, I know we can't go back and forth, but the sheriff is hosting their quarterly community meetings in country club lanes tomorrow evening. Please, I encourage you to, for you and members of the community, to show up to that. Code enforcement will also be there. It's a really good forum to discuss this issue, which we have been working on. I know it's frustrating. Thank you.
Thank you.
Debra?
My name's Debra Ruiz. It's spelled D-E-B-R-A. I don't know how that got on there, but I've been with the county for the last three years, almost four. I work as a human service specialist. I work in the CalWorks Continuing Department. I process benefits for CalWorks, CalFresh, Medi-Cal, homeless assistance. We process EBT 2259 claim forms for fraudulent EBT transactions. I'm there, I speak with people, maybe 10 to 20 people a day, giving them my hand, lifting them up, helping them. And I just wanted to point out a few things. When I first started with the county, household size of four, average pay was, sorry, the level-one average pay was $4,524 per month. There were people in my class that were actually passing for CalWorks, CalFresh. Our income is really low, and I feel very embarrassed to stand here and beg for 2.8%. So I just wanted to point that out, that the income is very extremely low. We can't even get approved for CalWorks because we're just over the federal poverty level. So thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Olivia Brown, a DHA county employee of multiple years. I became a board member because I desired to advocate for change at DHA, to ameliorate the working conditions of my colleagues. I erroneously assumed that management and my colleagues had the shared goals of improving both internal and external customer service. While I have been disavowed of this, is I have observed that management maintains a philosophy of getting the most amount of work from its employees for the least amount of pay, which makes economic sense for a for-profit company. However, we are not widget makers. We are poverty eradicators. We are crime preventers. We are hope catalyzers. We are present and future improvers. Due to continual understaffing, you demonstrate your lack of concern for our customers who must endure three-to-five-hour-long wait times to see a customer service representative or to speak with a service center representative to get their issues resolved. Who cares if the frontline or the service center employees have to encounter angry hostile customers repeatedly during their workday? It does not affect you. You don't experience the secondary trauma from hearing or witnessing our customers experience. I ask of you, who do folks call when their Medi-Cal has been denied or discontinued and they can't obtain their life-sustaining medicine? DHA. Who does one call when one cannot pay their rent due to their EBT benefits having been scammed? DHA. Who does a teacher call when they suspect child abuse? CPS. Who does a recently arrived immigrant call whenever they have any questions? DHA. Who does one call when one does not have a place to stay due to domestic violence? DHA. Excuse me. We are the lifeblood of this county. We work with the most economically challenged, the underserved, the voiceless, the unhoused, the passed over, the folks on some of their most challenging days. Many of us chose this work for the county government because we wanted to serve our community and attain economic security. Yet many of us find ourselves in similar economic struggles to our customers, trying to stretch our nominal salaries to meet our monthly obligations. During the pandemic, we were deemed to be essential employees, which to many meant disposable. Hence, as essential employees, workers, we deserve essential livable income. The county's purpose to improve lives, whose life? Workers are barely making ends meet. The county's vision, we create awe-inspiring experiences for our staff and customers. We are in awe at how inequitably we are treated. You granted yourselves a 36% raise and county management a 12% raise, yet you offer us 2.88%. The math ain't mathin'. Live up to your professed values. Exhibit compassion. Demonstrate integrity. Build trust in your community. Be innovative. Do better, be better.
Greetings, Chairman Serna and county supervisors. My name is James Starr. I am chair of the UPE Board of Directors and a 40-year county employee. I'm speaking with you today about the state of contract negotiations between UPE and County of Sacramento. First, there's the county's salary proposal of 2.8%, which is inadequate to either recruit or retain employees for jobs where working conditions are notoriously poor. But it's your health insurance proposal that really has your employees worried. The county's proposal removes the guarantee that changes to health insurance plans and co-payments require approval from both the union and the county. It takes away the guarantee that Kaiser will be an offered medical plan. It allows the county to eliminate our existing medical plans and substitute other medical plans, which the county refuses to name or describe to the union. It allows the county to increase medical co-pays without limit. It allows the county to shift costs away from premiums, of which the county pays 80%, by increasing co-pays, of which the employees pay 100%. UPE does not oppose the idea of making changes to healthcare, but only if the county clearly demonstrates cost savings for our members, and not just cost savings for the county. The current employee protections in the legacy contract date back to 2006. I was there then, and we went on strike for four days that year to win those protections. We won't give them up for 2.8%.
My name is Deanna Green. I'm a 008 board member and a social worker with senior and adult services, adult protective I've been with the county for 20 years. A few years back, I was threatened by a suspect when I was investigating a financial abuse case. County council took it to court, and I was awarded restitution. But my PM had to go to court, my county council and PM went to court for me to win that case for me. That person, that suspect, threatened my life and threatened the life of my family. As a result of that case, my PM came to the Board of Supes and requested that APS's license plates were blocked, just like our counterparts in CPS, which you guys denied. I don't understand why our lives are less important than the lives of CPS social workers. What we do is just as unsafe as our CPS counterparts. APS differentials was also denied. The work that we do in APS is just as unsafe for our lives. In addition, the work that we do in APS is very unsafe. It threatens our lives. We deserve differential just as much as CPS. APS social workers are like the stepchildren of the county. We are often forgotten. Board of Supes, you guys often forget about us. One other thought I wanted to mention, Ms. Rodriguez, you told the fair guy when he was here at one of the meetings that you appreciated him. All of the meetings that I've been to, you've never mentioned that you appreciate any of us, social workers, any of us 005 members, and I kind of felt some type of way about that, because we risk our lives, and you have never said that you appreciate any of us. I know that we sometimes are kind of hostile up here, but at the end of the day, we represent the county for you guys. We do, we risk our lives for you guys, and you have never said that you appreciate us. That kind of stuff goes a long way for us. So anyway, I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Well, Deanna, just to let you know that I do appreciate you and the work that you all do.
Hello, my name is Michelle Moyer. I'm not going to talk about a whole lot. I'm just here to represent all the people that I work with. Every time this issue's come up, I've watched, like now, Serna, you haven't even been paying attention to half of what people have been saying. I've watched you pick up your phone. That same disdain that I'm watching right now is exactly what I'm seeing for all of the people that I work with. We've come here because, for whatever reason, the county doesn't feel that we have any value. As I sit out there in the lobby, I watch the signs. You tout all of these people that you have helped, all of these people who you have served. Who do you think did that work? Who do you think did it make it possible for you to be touting all of these numbers? You sit there with this attitude like we're wasting your time. We spend our lives in these jobs. We spend our lives helping these people and making you look good. The people who receive benefits are about to get an increase of 3.47, 74. You can't even give us that. You're talking about a 2.8. That isn't even the cost of living. How can you honestly sit there and expect us to continue making these numbers look good for you while you turn around and dump on us and treat us like we're nothing? It proves every time you hire a new class of workers, every time, look at the numbers, the turnover rate. You can't keep any employees, and they keep downgrading the requirements just because you can't get somebody to come and do this work. For those of us that have been here for more than a decade, you should be very grateful. Everybody's come up here and said, "Oh, thank you for giving me that time. Thank you for giving me..." No, I'm actually angry. I'm tired of people saying, "Oh, thank you for this," and kissing up for something that you guys don't seem to even value. Take that into consideration. Get your mediators back in there. Give us something that is actually shows that value, instead of walking around telling us, "Oh, thank you for your service. Thank you for all you do." That's no more than saying, "Have a good day." That's no more than saying, have a good day.
Ryan?
Good morning. I'm basically here to speak on behalf of all of the 005, 008 members, as well as the rest of the county employees. Right now, our negotiators are at a standstill. I'd like to get that moving again. Under the current proposal, I kind of see the following, and please correct me if I'm wrong. You want to change our medical, and you don't want us to have an option to say yes or no to that. With that said, you also don't want to allow us to strike that decision that you might The medical that you may propose could cost more than our cost of living that you're offering. So therefore, most likely, we're going to end up losing money in the end, something that none of us can afford right now. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good morning. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Orlando Batarraro. I'm the owner of the WaveMax Laundry Facility under construction at the Country Club Plaza. We stopped construction in January due to a finding of excessive mold in the facility. No one should really be in there, you know, until that's all remedied. I'm here to ask you to reconsider the county's approach to California Toxic Mold Protection Act, Health and Safety Code 26140-26156. When I found mold in my facility, I contacted the county for help, and I was told by several different divisions, including code enforcement, that commercial mold is not an issue that the county follows up on. They will do it in residential, but not in commercial. Again, I want to ask you to reconsider this. Mold is a symptom. In and of itself, yes, it needs to be remedied, and yes, it can present health problems for individuals, but it is caused by excessive moisture coming into the building. I know earlier leaking was referenced in the mall. I know that videos have been sent to you over several years of this occurring in the Country Club Plaza. That moisture leads to a breakdown of the structure of the building. Think about it this way: wood rots, metal rusts. The last thing that I think anybody wants to deal with is the eventuality that can occur there. You could have a roof collapse in a building where you have excessive moisture. You have 1,000 pound HVAC units on top of the building. Over my facility, there is a large structure. Many of you have probably seen it. It's a, it's a large metal cinema sign. That cinema sign is weighs thousands of pounds and is bolted into the building. None of us want to see anything like that happen. Again, please reconsider your enforcement of the California Toxic Mold Protection Act. I'm going to leave you with a couple things. One is my mold report. One is my roof inspection. One is an outline of what can happen in a commercial structure if this is not addressed, as long, as well as a diagram of what can take place. Thank you so much. Appreciate the time.
My name is Alvin Kimbrel. I'm a local business owner, and I'm here to speak in regards to some of the issues that have been expressed about Country Club Plaza. I'm one of the vendors for Country Club Plaza and have been for quite a few years. Part of my responsibilities is to try to assist the mall, as well as other malls, and to trying to eliminate hazards, safety concerns. Unfortunately, some of the conditions of the mall have to do with, some of the things I've heard as a result of our community having homelessness and people not being kind of respectful of rules and boundaries. So what my role is, is to assist these mall in those types of endeavors that help them to keep the community safer. And I am here to attest firsthand that I have seen this particular property since it was purchased in 2022 do extraordinary work. I've seen them, as well as the Sacramento County sheriffs, on many occasions, at a moment's notice, make service calls to protect my safety as a person that's assisting to, of course, make the mall a better place. And I've seen countless circumstances and people diligently trying to make the community better in that area. Every Saturday, there's a farmer's market there that serves people, makes the environment very healthy, and brings festive attitudes. I've noticed all kinds of festivals. And I've seen the mall take a great deal of hardships. And I'm going to be very succinct in what my hope is. First of all, this is how I put meatballs in my spaghetti. The mall pays my salary as well as other people's salaries. There's all kinds of employees from Wincole to some of the local cinemas and various people that work there depend on the resources of this. Our county depends on those resources. In addition to that, of course, to pay for things like health and human services and all the other benefits. And we need to be able to sometimes just give our business owners a break. They're doing the best we can. They're, of course, I, you know, taking some of the circumstances that the whole county is taking, and I think we all can be better as a community, finding ways to build those bridges instead of building up walls. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alyssa, and I'm with UPE 008. These are hard jobs, and I don't know your experiences, but if you've never had an over-inflated caseload of individuals and families struggling with their health, mental health, childcare, trauma, housing, transportation, then I'm not sure you can truly appreciate how stressful and emotionally taxing that is to have that on you. It's hard work, and it doesn't take breaks, and it requires those of us who care enough to do this work to show up every day and to invest. But our capacity to invest is impacted when we are struggling. And with our healthcare being threatened, as we watch our cost of living continually increase, many of us are struggling. We are here asking for a contract that allows us to continue to invest in this community. You, in your position, have to choose to partner with us. We cannot do this alone. We need your support.
Thank you.
That concludes your off agenda comments.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you to all of our speakers who were with us this morning to speak on off agenda matters. This is another friendly reminder, Brown Act forbids our ability to discuss at any length the subjects that are brought before us during off agenda, the off agenda part of our meeting schedule. But we do hear what you're saying. We do take that into account. And again, we want to thank you for your time joining us here today to testify in person. Before we can continue, Madam Clerk, I just want to say thank you to Vice Chair Rodriguez for opening the meeting. I was in the middle of a media interview, otherwise I would have been here for the beginning. So thank you, Vice Chair. With that, Madam Clerk, next item.
Yes, item two is a presentation of resolution recognizing Mary Ann Byrd upon the occasion of her retirement with the University of California Cooperative Extension.
Do we have the recipient for the resolution?
My understanding is that she would be here.
I recognize some familiar faces. So I don't know, obviously because it predates me, but I don't know how District 5 is the representative to, to serve with the UCC-E, but essentially it's a partnership between University of California at Davis and a couple of us counties, including the counties of Sacramento, Yolo, and Slano. And it essentially, as I understand it, exists to promote the perpetuation of agriculture and good practices and ways that people can have a better experience with their environment and with the production of food and, and household sustenance. And so Mary Ann Byrd has been an important part of that program, and she began in 1998 and promoted up to a 4H Youth Development Advisor in 1999. 4H is more than just raising animals. It really is about creating good character in people, giving them a better understanding of their world, their environment, and kind of how we all subsist as we go through this life. And so she has worked tirelessly in scientific literacy as well, and obviously, supporting youth development has been an important part of her role. And she has come to a point in her life where she's taking down her official shingle. I'm sure she will still be involved privately, and so this is a resolution from the Board of Supervisors congratulating and offering gratitude to Mary Ann Byrd for her remarkable 27 years of commitment and dedication to the people of Sacramento County and wishing her a long, happy, and healthy retirement. And the podium is yours, if you'd like to say a few words.
Thank you. Not many, but a few. Thank you so much, Supervisor Hume and members of the Sacramento County Supervisors. I have a lot of memories connected with this, with these chambers. I've attended multiple 4H achievement nights here in this room. I've watched youth, volunteers, and community partners stand before you and presented budget hearings when UCC-E funding was in jeopardy. I've witnessed members of the Country Center 4H Club present about their experiment that was accepted by NASA to be launched on the space shuttle, and that they convinced the supervisors to help fund their trip to Florida to watch this very exciting event. But my favorite, I think, is annually honoring 4H adult and sometimes youth volunteers gathered here to receive recognition as Sacramento County volunteers. One of our tenants in 4H is citizenship. We help young people know and understand that they have a voice and that it is their responsibility to make their communities better. From club members who hold office or plan community service events, to our teen teachers who facilitate cooking or science or outdoor education programs, in 4H, we model and teach leadership and the importance of giving service to others. When 4H members gather here, it's a reminder that they are an important part of our community. It's been an honor to work for the University of California in the Cooperative Extension Service. My work has been fulfilling, and I am part of an amazing group who care deeply about what they do. 4H is about one of several programs that UCC-E houses. Others include our nutrition education workers who help our community, from preschoolers to senior citizens, eat healthier and stretch their food dollars. Judy McClure and our extensive team of master gardeners that she has built through the decades. Our growing Master Food Preservers Program, which is a statewide model. Our farm advisors, especially the small farms team that lives in our office, that assures that growers with limited resources have the information and support to be successful. Advisors and other academics who conduct evaluation and research to help communities solve issues and adopt best practices. And of course, our 4H team leader here, Susan, who has the vision that moves us forward and who leads with skill and, more importantly, with her heart. And of course, our 4H team, some of which are here, Jennifer Hankins, Burl Johnson, and Michelle Ross, along with the numerous volunteers and community partners who have made learning come alive for youth throughout the county. These are my partners, my friends, and they are the best. I am grateful for all my teammates and the passion they bring to their work every day. They have a deep commitment to service and to making Sacramento a healthier, better-educated, more productive, and vibrant community. We may be small, but we make a big difference. And likely my last time to stand in this place and address our county leaders, I really want you to know this, what you have here is incredibly special. Thank you for this recognition. Thank you for these few minutes to share my thoughts and my gratitude. Most of all, thank you for the chance to serve. It has been an honor.
Thank you, Mary Ann, and just want to, again, congratulate you on your retirement and your decades of service. As a senior member of the board, I'm very familiar with the extension and all the great work that goes on. And thank you Supervisor Hume for your introductory words about what programs like 4H are in terms of more than just, you know, animals at fairs aspect of it. So I'm not a representative where most of the work that actually takes place on a daily basis occurs, but again, very familiar with, familiar with the programs that you've been so closely tied to over the years, and we all wish you the best in your retirement, and I'm sure you won't be a stranger. With that, Vice Chair Rodriguez.
I just want to say congratulations on this next step of yours, Mary Ann, and to let you know that I'm very grateful for the work that you have done and the legacy that you're leaving and the impact that you have made on many individuals. So congratulations and thank you.
Next item, please.
And so for our next item, three, this is the presentation of resolution recognizing Tang Hurd upon the occasion of his retirement from the Sacramento County.
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Rami Zachariah. I'm the county chief information officer. I'm happy to be with you here today to recognize Tang Hurd on the occasion of his retirement. We are also joined by Tang's family and coworker and friends. Tang has had a storied career with the county and with the Department of Technology. He was promoted several times due to his outstanding work ethics and commitment to public service. Tang started his career with the county in 1992, 33 years ago, with the Department of Human Assistance as an eligibility worker. In 1997, Tang was promoted to data processing technician with the Department of Technology. And in 1998, Tang was promoted again to a data processing technician three. In 1999, Tang was promoted to an IT analyst, and in 2008, Tang was promoted again to a senior IT analyst with the Department of Technology. In 2021, Tang promoted to his current position as a supervising information technology analyst with the Compass and Focus Teams, where he currently oversees the Basis Team, thus the hardware and support team for the county ERP system. Tang will retire on July 31, 2025, and he's looking forward to enjoying more time with his family and pursuing extended travels to places such as home country of Laos, Thailand, Malaysia, Singapore, and the Philippines. Tang is also looking forward to be able to serve more in his monk community. Congratulations, Tang, on your retirement, and we wish you the very best in your future.
Thank you. My notes on my phone, so I'll try to remember what I wrote.
You're gonna have to wing it.
I am. First of all, thank you, the board, for doing this presentation, for recognizing my services for Sacramento County. Both my wife and I are longtime county employee. She's in DHA now, and I'm here at DTA. I'm a monk coming from Laos. I came to America April 15, 1980, with no English, but with hard work and perseverance, and here I am today. In our culture, we never talk about retirement. You work until the day you can't work anymore, but here I am. I just want to thank my management team at DTA, my compass team, the entire compass team. If you get paid every two weeks because of this team. Weekend dates and I, to make sure that all the 22,000 active and retired, we get paid every two weeks because of this team, and they are amazing. And they are amazing and hardworking people. And I've been with this job since 1997, like Rami said, but I enjoy, and I enjoy a lot. I care what I do. I love what I do. And I will miss my coworker, my team, and the place I work. And again, thank you, the Board, for recognizing and doing this for me. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Tang.
Thank you.
Tang, before you leave?
Yeah, come back.
I know you're itching to get out of here, but first of all, thank you for your over three decades of service. And I'm really glad that you mentioned, and it sounded like you did this with a lot of pride in your voice, your MONG heritage. I've had a chance to really get to know our local MONG community in many respects. And you mentioned that part of that culture, at least in your experience, really is this sense of duration, right? Whether it's, you know, working until you can't, which is, you know, let's be honest, can be very different than some other cultures. And I know that's true because I've been to the MONG New Years, which I believe lasts for, what, four days? Something like that?
Yes.
So I really am very proud of you to the extent that you care about my pride in you. But I do, every time we have these presentations and we hear from and recognize, rightfully so, the people that have committed themselves to public service for as long as you have in whatever capacity, it really should strike a chord with a lot of people. And I remain very frustrated at times when I hear on occasion dismissive comments about, quote unquote, bureaucrats or people in government generally. They don't, they just don't know. They don't know about people like you. They don't know about people like Mary Ann. And I wish all of those naysayers, those Monday morning quarterbacks who choose to kind of just casually comment, make those comments about government and the people who serve the public, could be at these types of occasions so they can actually hear that pride in your voice. So again, really appreciate what you've done, and I can wish you well enough in your retirement. And I'm glad your family's here as well. Don't go away. Vice Chair Rodriguez would like to make a few comments as well.
Well, I just want to congratulate you on your retirement and to let you know that you are the epitome of the American dream. To come to this country with nothing and to get to where you are and actually retire and enjoy retirement is really, truly something that I enjoy to see. I also want to add a little humor that 33 years ago, when it was a DOS system and all the noise to upload to a certain, you know, program or AOL and the noise that it made, and to where it is today, it really is, you have some great stories, I'm sure, to, you know, to share. So anyways, enjoy your retirement, enjoy your travel. Sounds like there are many great places that you're going to visit with some fantastic food, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, next item, please.
Yes, item four is the presentation recognizing July as Parks Make Life Better Month and celebrating the 40th anniversary of Park and Recreation Month.
Good morning, Ms. Bellis.
Good morning. How are you?
Doing well. How are you?
I'm doing great.
Good.
It's a beautiful day.
It is.
So thank you so much for allowing me to vary from the county's PowerPoint standard this one last time.
Wait, wait, wait. What does that mean?
One last time this year. Not a last time for me. Hopefully, you're stuck with me for a few more years. But I do want to recognize the fact that it is Parks and Recreation Month, Parks Make Life Better. We are working together to build together, play together, and we are celebrating 40 years this year. So why do we celebrate parks? I mean, I obviously am very passionate about parks and feel there are so many different reasons that we can celebrate parks, but I wanted to touch on just a few global reasons. Mental health and physical well-being. Our parks help people get out in nature, help them to prevent and treat mental illness, stress, ADHD, Alzheimer's, all kinds of things. Our parks are important to people's well-being and need to be recognized as such. We create livable communities. Our urban spaces are essential. You all know this. We have economic benefits, social benefits, air quality, reducing urban heat. I mean, we did it so well today, it's going to be, what, 80 degrees? Just kidding. We foster a sense of community as well. Economic sustainability. I should have brought this one, you know, a month ago. But according to research by the Trust for Public Land, every dollar invested in parks can yield up to $4 in economic benefits. We've done a study for the American River Parkway to recognize, it was a long time ago, but in 2006, over $353 billion, $1 million in economic benefit from parks, from the American River Parkway alone, to our community. That's only gone up. We increase property values, public health savings from health outcomes that are better, environmental services, cleaner air, stormwater capture, and urban cooling. But we also have local impacts. Specifically, our Sacramento County Regional Parks supports some very important countywide plans. Our Community Wide Climate Action Plan, we're working hard to try and reduce the greenhouse gases for Sacramento County so that we can reach the very aspirational goals of our climate action plan. We also work with the Local Age and Disability Friendly Action Plan, specifically the way that we are not isolating our disabled and our aged community and trying to get them out and being able to socialize more in parks. That's a very key focus for our department. And development connectivity. I say this because every single new development that we've been working on over the last decade has an element of trails. That's because it's important to people. They want to feel connected. They want to have that ability to exercise and be out in open space. So on behalf of the just under 200 folks that are permanent and part-time staff for Sacramento County, thank you for recognizing the fact that parks make life better and celebrating our Parks and Recreation Month.
Great. Thank you, Liz. And this is, this is an annual recognition, if I'm not mistaken. And I'm glad that we're doing that kind of at the height of summer here because for many Sacramento County residents, parks are their backyards. And I'm reminded of that every day that I come into the office and I cross on the I-5 Bridge over the American River, and I could look off to my right. And sometimes when it's hot enough, even in the late morning, Tuscany Beach is already being populated. And one of my favorite things is to really just take in the fact that when I'm on my way home and I go north on I-5, I could look to my right and see our grassy areas, our shaded areas in Discovery Park. And I'm reminded, again, that for those that perhaps live in multifamily units, starting out their hopes of residency in terms of progressing through the continuum of housing, when they don't have that backyard, they use our regional parks. And it's not just Discovery Park. I mean, I think each of us has a kind of a very proud geographic connection to the regional parks in our respective districts, and we all understand that. And it's critical to kind of remind ourselves on occasion, that's what today's about, that parks are just not, you know, requirements under law. They are requirements under law, but they serve a great purpose. I'm very glad, Liz, that you mentioned our strong intentions when it comes to how we scrutinize development proposals so that there is that connectivity for active transportation, whether it's walking or cycling or hiking. I think many of you are well aware that I've been on this walking craze for a few months. And so I have a chance to kind of walk through some of the trail systems in and around my home, both in and outside of the county, some in the county, some in the city. And so again, parks are what make our county great. And I'm really delighted as Chair that I'm just saying a few words about the fact that we really value the fact that we have such a robust regional park system, the crown jewel, of course, of which is the American River Parkway. So thanks again, Liz.
Thank you very much.
Vice Chair Rodriguez.
I just want to say that everything you said is so true about parks because when I look at my life and I look at my childhood, so many, so many fun events with my family were at parks. I grew up in the city, so it was Golden Gate Park, it was Dolores Park, it was Day Park. And the memories that I have of things that we did on Sundays is just a memory that I take, especially since my father passed away 10 years ago. I treasure those memories. But parks really were an area where families can go and build these memories. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. Well, she can't read there by herself. I'm going to come down so we can take.
Please join me.
Why don't we all come down?
Okay. We'll go down there. Shall we go to the well?
Item five is the presentation of resolution recognizing July 20 through 26, 2025 as Probation Supervision Week for Sacramento County.
I believe this is the first time, besides we recognizing you as our new chief, that you've been here, is it not?
Yes, it is.
All right. Good to see you.
I see.
How's everything going?
Great.
Excellent. All right. So members of the Board and the public and staff, again, last, the last item I recognized as being an annual one, this is no different. Again, and it's rightful that we do this, this is a resolution that I am presenting to our chief, recognizing July 20 through the 26, 2025 as Probation Supervision Week for Sacramento County. I will not read all the wherestes in the resolve, but let me just say that over the years, those that have known me well, understand that I have a very distinct and strong appreciation for probation. And it's not that I don't have the same for other departments, I do. But when you get to understand probation as not just a group of individuals that are, one, spoke of our law enforcement community, but as something very distinct and special in terms of being kind of that hybrid between law enforcement, being sworn individuals, some of whom are sworn, but also their responsibilities and their charge to assist in kind of affecting the trajectory of people's lives, in particular, young people's lives. And if you do a ride-along, if you spend some time at an Adult Day Reporting Center, if you take a tour of our youth detention facility and hear from the people that make the agency so special and their passion about what they do, it doesn't come across as kind of that standard law and order perspective necessarily. I know it's there, it's present, but they're always going to start telling you accounts or anecdotes about a young person who they affected, who they now stay in contact with, who's, you know, doing great things in life. And it's because that probation officer or, you know, that probation, that person working in probation took the time to really affect that trajectory. And again, some have said it's a hybrid between law enforcement and social services, and I understand that. But I just think it really comes from a deeper place of sincerely, genuinely caring about our community and making sure everyone has a chance to succeed. So with that, Chief, I want to present you with the reso. Let's take a few photos, and then the podium is yours.
I was going to wait for Supervisor to sit. Good morning. Thank you. Appreciate the kind words for our department. I'd be remiss if I didn't start by, sorry, may I talk louder? I'd be remiss if I didn't start by honoring the Agent Joshua Byrd, who was recently killed in the line of duty, doing very similar work to what we do in probation in Oakland, California. So.
Is that parole agent, correct?
Parole agent, correct. Killed in line of duty, first and ever. So very hard to process that because our department does the same similar work. So just be remiss if I didn't honor that during this parole supervision week, probation supervision week. To my probation crew, who actually showed up a little bit hiding in the back, I want to take a moment, I wrote specifically, I usually come off the top of my head with them, but I want to make sure that I intentionally speak from my heart. I want to take a moment to honor the heart and soul of this department, our people. To our administrative professionals, thank you. You're often the first voice on the phone to the backbone behind every file, the calm in the storm, and the ones who keep our operations moving forward with precision and grace. You watch over our budget, our leases, and you keep us afloat. Your work may not always be visible to the public eye, but it is essential to everything we do, so thank you. To our probation officers, thank you. You wear many hats, law enforcer, mentor, social worker, and advocate. You walk a fine line every day between accountability and compassion, and you do so with professionalism, integrity, and a deep sense of service. Your role in keeping communities safe while guiding individuals toward a better path cannot be overstated. Public safety is and always will be our priority, but we know that the safety is not sustained by enforcement alone. True safety comes when people have a second chance, when we provide structure and support, when we hold people accountable and believe in their potential to change. That balance we strike here in Sacramento every day, we push to rehabilitate while we protect, we guide while we guard. And as we do this important work, we also recognize that none of this is sustainable if we do not take care of ourselves and each other. Wellness, your wellness, is also a priority. Because you cannot pour into an empty cup, the work you do is emotionally taxing, often invisible, and always impactful. As chief, I'm committed to investing in your well-being, creating a culture where it is okay to ask for help, and to ensure we support not just the people we serve, but those who serve. This week is about recognizing you, but let's be clear, one week is not enough. You deserve to be celebrated all year long. Thank you for your dedication. Thank you for your courage, and thank you for making Sacramento County not just good, but great. And thank you to the Board and County Executive.
I'm going to take prerogative and just offer just a few more comments before we get to my colleagues. I like what you just said about "we guide while we guard." Is that actually printed? I'm curious, is that printed on our vehicles? I know many of them are intentionally.
Not yet.
Yeah, right. So I was hoping that maybe guiding while guarding could be something you might give some thought to, if it is appropriate, that perhaps much the same as, you know, PDs and our sheriff's units show their agency mottos. I really like that, so I would encourage you to maybe give that some thought, see how we might kind of brand that, and let the public know, maybe in three words, kind of what it is that we're all about here in terms of Sacramento County probation.
Thank you.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to take a moment and recognize the work that all of the folks in our probation department do, and how many different aspects of the county they touch over in the courts, as well as, obviously, the youth detention facility and the youth justice system, and what people most usually think of as far as the parole-related activities. But I just wanted to acknowledge you, Chief, in the time we spent yesterday getting to know each other a little bit better, and I wish you Godspeed in your efforts to make sure that the grass isn't crispy.
Amen. Thank you. Vice Chair Rodriguez.
Chief, I just want to say how grateful I am to the work that individuals with the probation department do. I want to share a story. I had an employee who was probably one of the best employees I ever had, and went through some hard times, committed some serious crimes, did some time, and got out and called me and said, you know, "I really want a chance, I want to change my life, I want to get better, will you give me a chance and give me employment?" Hired him back, and he had a relationship with a probation officer for the next two years. And I just remember the relationship they had. It was stern, but yet it was very encouraging, and it was wanting to see this individual rehabilitate his life. And it just gave me an insight into the work that you all do, that, I mean, ultimately, we want people to be better. We want people to be better tomorrow than they were today. And so, for the work that you do, I just want to say thank you to all of you, because it is very apparent that it is crucial to many people's lives who have gone down the wrong path, is to ensure that they get right back on track and can be productive citizens of our community. So, thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you. Good words. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Chief. I just want to pile on with everybody here, and I think you and I have a meet and greet coming up here, I'm looking forward to that. Congratulations to you, and congratulations for such a good turnout from your team out here, that just shows you have a ton of support, and we certainly support all the work you do. You know, I've worked around probation and parole for many, many years in my prior life, and just saw the power of the work you do, and how complicated it was. I was happy at times to be able to go home without having to follow through on all the additional supports that you have to follow through with. You have all the skills and responsibilities of frontline law enforcement, but are expected to have so many of the skills and sensitivities of social workers in our society, too, and that is a very, very difficult job. And I just am so appreciative of probation departments, our probation department in particular, in what you have done to reimagine criminal justice in the state of California. You are definitely a part of the solution, and making us all better because of it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Great. Thank you. Thanks again to everyone up in the chief's seat, sir. Appreciate you being here. All right. Next item, please.
Okay. Our next items are consent matters, six through 49. For item seven, you're introducing an ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter 4.36 of the Sacramento County Code related to massage establishment owner and massage manager requirements, waiving full reading and continuing to August 5th for adoption. Item 13, you're introducing a fee ordinance amending Chapter 2.72 of the Sacramento County Code, amend the Department of Agriculture weights and measures public fee schedule, waive full reading and continue to August 5th for adoption. For item 16, you're adopting an ordinance amending Title 22 of the Sacramento County Code relating to land division and development. You waive reading on this on July 8th. On item 25, you're introducing an ordinance amending Chapter 6.20, Title VI of the Sacramento County Code relating to solid waste management, waiving full reading and continuing to August 5th for adoption. And for item 42, you're adopting an ordinance amending Chapter 16.20 to Title 16 of the Sacramento County Code relating to housing, waiving full reading and continuing from, sorry, you waive reading on this on July 8th. And that concludes the clerk's notes.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we get to my colleagues, Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed to speak on matters on consent?
We do. We have three speakers for item seven. This is the introduction of the ordinance on the massage establishment.
Very good. Thank you. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I actually had some comments on item seven, and also item 23, but if it's okay with you, I'd like to hear the public comment on item seven before I make my comments.
Yeah, let's, yeah, why don't we do this? Why don't we get through comments, or whether or not my colleagues want to pull items for separate votes first? Madam Clerk, why don't you read item 23 for the time being, so Supervisor Desmond can make his comment with regard to that matter?
Yes. Item 23 is the AC Overlay Project 2026 Phase D bids to be received on August 21st.
Okay. Thank you. And Lupe, would you mind? I have a couple of questions from DOT, and a couple of comments. So while you're walking down here, I just want to give my heartfelt thanks for this project. As some of you may know, this is essentially, the county is paving the other side of the roadway, roadways that the Fair Oaks Recreation and Park District had tore up, tore up the other side for a major, major project in the Fair Oaks Village. And Lupe, I just want to know, I wonder if maybe you can relay a little, a bit of information about what the sequences for paving between the park district and the county, and why we've decided to do it this way, split it up?
Yeah. And I'll give a little background, too. You know, the Plaza Park in the Fair Oaks Village is being renovated by the park district out there, and it's been in process for a few years now. I think during the design phase of that project, the county DOT, along with Supervisor Desmond, determined that it was in the best interest to look at the roadways around the park to be fully improved. The project for the park has some requirements to do some roadwork around the park, but we decided that it would be a good opportunity to partner with the park district and have the roads fully paved around the park. So, on May of 2023, we brought an item to the board, asking the board to authorize our director to get into an agreement with the park district, which we did. And so we had an agreement with the park district to pay them some amount of money to help with one project, really pave the full roadways. I think during the construction of the project, the park district was dealing with different challenges out there, design challenges, as I would call them, because in some of the locations, the park improvements were built significantly lower than the existing roadway height, elevation. So, they were dealing with some challenges. County staff from different departments went, met out with the contractor and stuff, and the park district to try to work, come up with some solutions to address these changes, or the difference in elevations that they were coming up with. And so, we did that, but I think during the process, the park district thought it was, they wanted to simplify their side of the project, because they were having some challenges with the contractor. And so they sent us a letter with the intent to terminate the contract that we had, and then they decided to move forward with just their portion of pavement. And so now, at this time, now that the project, the park project has completed the road improvements around the park that they were required to do, now we're coming in as soon as we can afterwards, so that this construction season, we could finish the remaining portion of the pavement, so that we could have fully paved, fully paved roadways around the park. And that's what the intent of this contract is, and there was just different challenges that the parks district is dealing with with that, so.
So, thank you, Lupe, and thank you, my colleagues, for indulging me to have this conversation. I think it's important to put this on the record, because there have been some other different characterizations about this in the community in Fair Oaks. But I think this is a great benefit for the community of Fair Oaks. I thank my colleagues up here for approving the allocation of those funds, I don't know, a couple of years ago, or whenever that was. And thank you, and DOT, you just have done an outstanding job in trying to navigate this whole thing. And I know, once it opens back up, the parks open back up in the village, we will continue to have discussions with the park district, merchants, property owners, about the parking situation there. But we, you know, a lot of people wanted us to anticipate what that's going to look like, but it's very difficult to do until the park opens up, and we understand what actions that we may be taking to support the village, and everybody who will be taking advantage of this wonderful new park that they've created. So, thank you very much, and I'm obviously very supportive of this item.
Very good. I am completely surprised you brought up roadway in the unincorporated area item. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I have comments only on items nine and 15, please.
Okay. I'll read both of those into the record. Item nine is the Warren E. Thornton Youth Center remodel facility to accommodate behavioral health children's crisis stabilization unit psychiatric health facility program. The bids will be received on September 4th, and I believe you said 19?
No, 15.
15. And item 15 is a request to approve a resolution accepting $187,991 donation from the estate of William F. Price.
Great. Thank you. So first on item number nine, obviously, the wet center was in the news for unsavory reasons, lack of a better characterization, and this is remodeling that facility into what I think is a much-needed and much-appreciated, and hopefully productive, use for the county. It's a reuse of an existing facility, which I think shows great efficiency and good caretaking of the taxpayers' assets. And so I just want to thank DCE Katari, and Director Lutz, and Dr. Quist, in their efforts to bring this facility to fruition, and I hope that it provides some good care for Sacramento County residents for many years to come. Thank you.
Good comments. Thank you.
And then, item number 15, this is, it's kind of an odd item to bring before the Board of Supes, that if somebody donates over $10,000 for the county, we have to okay it. I guess that's to put a safeguard in place, so that it doesn't obligate us to do something that works out to be financially negative to the county. But this is a gentleman who started working for the DA's office back in 1975, and then transferred over in, as a child support officer, and then the Department of DCSS, and then retired in 2012, and is now donating $187,991 to animal care services, because he loved big cats up until the point where he adopted a small cat, and decided he liked small cats as well. And so I want to thank Director Bedsworth for the fact that she's taking this money, apparently, at least on paper at this point, and going to use it for a medical bed for small cats, as well as additional span neuter clinics to prevent the proliferation of unwanted animals within the Sacramento County area. And so I thank the estate of William Price, and I thank Director Bedsworth for putting this money to good use. Thank you.
Good comments. I can't help but think that your predecessor, if he's watching, is jumping for joy right now, so. All right. Very good. Okay. Any other comments about other items? Don't see any. Madam Clerk, did you already read item seven?
I did.
Okay. So go ahead with public speakers, please.
All right. Our first speaker is BJ Pitts.
Good morning.
Good morning.
BJ Pitts, CAMTC, Certified Massage Therapist, 552. Thanking the board for this very long process on this go-around of the massage ordinance, and glad to see it moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kimberly Austin. Thank you, Chad and team for working with us on this, thank you for working with us, Massage Advocate team, on this ordinance update. I look forward to continuing this working relationship for many years, and I'm happy to see Supervisor Desmond on the board for California Massage Therapy Council. Kimberly Austin, Certified Massage Therapist, 68, 526.
Very good. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Tony Psychotis. I'm a certified massage therapist, and usually in front of the board and other lawmakers, my two modes are complaining or pleading. So, I'm just really full of gratitude today. I don't think last August you guys thought that this massage thing about fees was going to turn into this, but I appreciate yours and your staff's persistence and patience in writing and improving this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, that's a relief, because I wasn't really sure what you were going to say. But it is, it is a pleasure, and I was recently appointed by CSAC as their representative on the California Massage.
Congratulations, by the way.
Thank you. So I've been seeing a lot more of all of you, and so thank you for being here today, and I just want, I'm supportive of this. Thank you, Chad, and staff for coming up with this solution. I think it's a really good one, and I expect to get more accolades for Sacramento County at the next CAMTC meeting, so. And with that, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to move the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for consent. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
By the way, Mr. Desmond, I got a little knot right here. Can you?
Okay.
We'll let the chambers clear a little bit here.
Okay.
Sacramento County's finest beard. Okay, go ahead and read the item, please.
Yes. For item 50, this is County Service Area Number One Zone Number One, public hearing on the benefit category change and levy of increased service charges for the Beach Avenue and Roloff Way parcel map.
Good morning, members of the board. Joe, finest beard in the county graphic, with county engineering. So, the Beach and Roloff project is located at the south end of Roloff Way, and on the west side of Beach Avenue, and proposes five single-family lots. During the entitlement process, the project was conditioned to provide full funding for street and safety light maintenance, which is provided by County Service Area Number One for unincorporated Sacramento County. And as a result, the project applicant submitted an application to initiate the benefit category change process, and in response to that request, a ballot and notice were mailed to the property owner on June 6th. Currently, the project consists of two parcels in the safety light-only benefit category, each assessed $2.56 annually. The proposed change is to the enhanced street and safety light residential category with an annual combined assessment of approximately $328.10 for all five parcels. So if there are no questions from the board, we recommend that the board open the public hearing, consider any written and oral testimony, objections, and protests, close the public hearing, and direct the clerk to tabulate the return protest ballot.
Very good. Any questions of staff before I open the public hearing? Okay. Opening the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed to speak on this matter?
We do not have any public comments.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing and ask you to tabulate the votes, please.
I have one ballot here. Okay. The legal owner is Connors Family Trust, parcel numbers 2610250032 and 033, and the site address is 6001 Beach Avenue and 6018 Roloff Way in Orangeville, California, and they are in favor of the annual service charge.
Great. So now I need to read in the resolutions, sorry, the fill-in for the resolutions. In Section 2, at the close of the hearing, the board had received zero written protests. In Section 3, at the close of the tabulation, the board had received one protest ballot, totaling 100% of the total service charges to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the change of benefit category, and 0% was in opposition.
Very good. Okay. A discussion, our...
I'll go ahead and move item number 50 for approval.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
For item 51, you're acting as the Sacramento County Groundwater Sustainable Agency. This is a public hearing to adopt an amended ordinance establishing a fee for the management of groundwater in the Sacramento County Groundwater Sustainability Agency, Casamnes Groundwater Sub Basin. Okay, any discussion?
I'll go ahead and move item number 50 for approval.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
For item 51, you're acting as the Sacramento County Groundwater Sustainable Agency. This is a public hearing to adopt an amended ordinance establishing a fee for the management of groundwater in the Sacramento County Groundwater Sustainability Agency Kasumnas Groundwater Sub Basin, and you waived reading on this item on May 20th.
Good morning.
Good morning, Board and Sheriff Serna, thank you so much for your time today, appreciate it. My name is Chris Hunley, I'm the Groundwater Sustainability Manager with the Sacramento County Department of Water Resources. Today, I'm going to be giving a very, very short presentation on the amended ordinance for the Kasumnas Sub Basin groundwater sustainability fees. If approved, the assessment is planned to generate approximately $77,000 in revenue. Wrong button.
There you go.
Staff are recommending the following actions: open the public hearing on the proposed amended ordinance, this was introduced to you on May 20th; consider public testimony and objections; close the public hearing; adopt the amended ordinance establishing the updated groundwater fees. And this last bullet, this was, that's going to be removed, there is no resolution for adoption. Some small background, the Sacramento County GSA is one of the members of the Kasumnas Groundwater Authority. That's a joint powers authority that was adopted in 2021. The related technical document that sort of governs the groundwater use within that sub basin was developed and submitted to the state, it was approved in October of 2023. The fees regarding the, the current sub basin operations, that was adopted by your board on July 27th of 2021. Currently, the fee is based on that original ordinance, and it assesses a $10 per irrigated acre, and that money is used to fund the initial GSP development, implementation activities, and our ongoing SIGMA compliance efforts. Of note, there was a $2.8 million state grant that helped prop us up and gave us considerable cost savings. The updated fee study, just to note that all of our partner agencies adopted this in fall of 2024, we're a little tiny bit late getting to the gate. It builds on the existing $10 per irrigated acre fee, and it establishes two new items. So the first one is a groundwater base parcel fee, and that's for folks, kind of like on the ag residential side of the house, a home that's on a private well. And the new fee proposed is $35.47 per groundwater-using parcel. And then there's a new groundwater, public water supply fee, which is $5.98 per acre foot pumped annually. That's based on a five-year running total. For the Kasumnas District, the only small public water system that we have is the McGee Training Center, and we're kind of estimating around $200 a year annually for that fee. Again, the revenue estimate is right around $77,000 annually. Wire local fees needed, the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, which was passed in 2014, you know, it's largely an unfunded state mandate. There's a, a litany of items that must be completed to stay in compliance with the state, all of our implementation activities, our ongoing coordination with, within the sub basin and outside of the sub basin, lots of outreach and engagement, there's a lot of monitoring requirements. Biannually, we have teams that go out and measure groundwater levels, look at various constituents, including nitrate, arsenic, and then all of that analysis and sort of compilation goes into an annual report. To further add to it, there is a five-year periodic review burden that each of the sub basins faces, you know, and that comes in at around $500,000 cost that all of us have to kind of split up. We also are looking at doing a plan amendment, that initial groundwater sustainability plan that was adopted in, or approved rather, in October of 2023, it was really the first cut with our best lens of what's going on out there. Of course, over the last five years, we're continually refining it, and our plan will be amended to reflect that. If fees are not adopted, the backstop is the state comes in. And on the right-hand side of your screen, you can see it's, it's a litany of charges, the very first and most painful cut is the $300 per well registration fee, that's every year, and then there's a sliding scale of 10 to $50 per acre foot that's pumped. We've done extensive public outreach and engagement, of course, we provided notice of this hearing, we've provided mailers to all of the potentially impacted parcels. One of the things that we did leverage is using the existing Kasumnas Groundwater Authority Board meetings to highlight all of the upcoming fees, and then probably the most fun is in the picture, our farmer's barbecue that Supervisor Hume's office graciously supports, and that's really kind of a boots-on-the-ground effort to get folks who use groundwater but are paying these fees to really meet and greet with their neighbors and with the regulated community. And we've got a lot of success from that, so thank you for that. The financial impact, there's no direct impact to the county. Again, the estimated revenue is just a little over $77,000. We do have a built-in appeals process, property owners can submit their appeal in writing to us, and then the next steps are, you know, adoption of the amended ordinance. This kicks off the fee enrollment process with the auditor's office, that assessment goes into this next tax cycle, and then the ongoing collection is what keeps the, the boat moving. And that concludes my presentation, and happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you very much. Looks like we do have Supervisor Hume in the queue, Supervisor.
Thank you Chair. I just want to state publicly my appreciation for you, Chris Hunley, for all you've done to lean in with this group. I can't overstate what a Herculean effort it has been to get to this point. The Kasumnas Groundwater Sub Basin, I believe, is the only one in Sacramento County with a projected overdraft, annual overdraft, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so this is not just an academic exercise, this has serious real-world consequences, not just in the sustainability of the groundwater supply, but also in the potential penalties and interference of the state should, should they not come to agreement. And so it's important to note that getting to this point is simply establishing the fee that will prepare the plan, it doesn't actually fund the projects that will address the overdraft that occurs annually. And it's about 10,000 acre feet, if I didn't say that already. So it's not an insignificant amount of water that we have to account for. But within this sub basin, you have agricultural residential, you have the city of Galt, you have large-scale private agricultural operations with their own vested interests, and so getting those cats herded, not to step on the, the item on consent relative to cats, but getting those cats herded was not an, an easy effort, so I certainly appreciate everything that you've done. I participated in the meetings here and there where I could to try and help provide a little guidance and cajole people into stopping to kick the tires and recognize the, the seriousness of the moment, and so this is a big day for this particular part of Sacramento County. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you Supervisor. Okay, again, thank you for your presentation. We do have to open and close the public hearing, so I'll do that at this point. Open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed to speak on this matter?
We do not have anyone signed up.
I will therefore close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for deliberation and/or motion.
I would move staff's recommendation.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Hey, for item 52, you're still acting as the Sacramento County Groundwater Sustainability Agency. This is a public hearing to adopt an ordinance establishing a fee for the management of groundwater in the Sacramento County Groundwater Sustainability Agency Solano Groundwater Sub Basin. You waived reading on this item on May 20th as well.
Today, again, thank you for your time. The Solano Sub Basin is set up a little tiny bit differently, I'm going to just move quickly into the, the presentation. So again, just some of the formalities, staff is recommending to open the public hearing on the proposed ordinance, which was introduced, introduced rather, on May 20th, consider public testimony and objections, close the public hearing, and adopt the ordinance establishing the groundwater fee for the Solano Sub Basin, the Sacramento County GSA's portion. Small background, the Sacramento County is part of the Solano Sub Basin Collaborative. Back in, I believe it was April 8th at your board meeting, you adopted the consolidation of four different reclamation districts that gave up their exclusive GSA status, they're now part of the Sacramento County GSA Solano District. That plan was adopted by the state, the respective GSP on January 2024, and currently, the county's Zone 13 Fund is helping prop up the GSP development and the initial workings on GSP Recognizing that Zone 13 and using our, our sort of general planning funds, it's not really sustainable nor appropriate for groundwater use in that district, we engaged with a consultant HDR Engineering, I'm sure you're familiar with them, they do lots of work here. They crafted a fee study that looked at our budget, our requirements, and they came out with a new fee that's $1.54 per accessible acre. This is different than the irrigated acre approach, so every parcel within the Solano area, or the Groundwater Sustainability Agency Solano District, is going to be assessed that $1.54 per accessible acre, should the fee pass, and, you know, it's fractionated down to, you know, some of them are quite small, but you can imagine the town of East Walnut Grove, City of Vialton, those are very small parcels. Restimated, or the estimated revenue is $66,000 per year. Again, we talked about wire local fees needed, and just to really hit home that SIGMA, while it has very great aspirational goals, they're unfunded. And a lot of the Prop 68 grant funds and this new Prop 4 that was passed, you know, a lot of that money is going to be tied up for other broader water and environmental efforts. The SIGMA world, you know, there's a lot of folks chasing that money, and so it's very challenging to, year after year, secure those grant funds. And again, if these fees don't pass, you know, the state is that backstop, which is, you know, really takes away the local control that SIGMA and this board supports. Brief reminder, the fees are used for implementation efforts, including that data management, going out, doing the monitoring work, building out our outreach and engagement plan, and then looking at, you know, what are some practical project and management actions that we can implement within the Solano Sub Basin. More public outreach and engagement, provided notice of this hearing, lots of mailers went out, both in English and in Spanish, and that was based on some feedback at our public meeting that we held at the Gene Harvey Center, and, you know, this kind of gave us some pause just to recognize the diversity of the community within the delta, and making sure that we have meaningful outreach and engagement efforts to, to best work with them. I did want to note that we received some feedback, most of the folks, you know, they, no one likes to pay new fees, so recognize that. And our staff took some, Austin Miller back here, you know, does a phenomenal job with working with folks and meeting them where they're at, and helping explain the rules and requirements of SIGMA in a very practical manner, so I appreciate that. No direct impact to the county. Again, the estimated revenue is $66,000 per year, that same appeals process is built into the ordinance, and then the same next steps, you know, hopeful adoption of the ordinance, the fee enrollment process begins late this week, and then the new assessments will be included on the next tax cycle.
Chris, before you continue, Supervisor Hume.
I was going to speak at the end.
Oh, okay.
If that's okay, thank you.
Perfect timing.
And that would be now. So just unlike the last item, this one's interesting because the portion of Sacramento County that overlaps in this sub basin, the groundwater table is considered a nuisance. Literally, you step too hard on the grass and water's going to cover your shoe. But it should come, there was no surprise to colleagues that when the state imposes unfunded mandates, they have the sword of Damocles hanging over you, that we will come in and usurp all of your local control and life will be worse off.
What?
Yeah, I know, color me surprised as well. But I want to acknowledge Austin Miller, who has diligently tried to get me to attend a meeting in Vacaville for the last year, and I've just refused to do it because, again, I can look my constituents in the eye and say they're better off paying the fee to keep the state at bay, but it really is a, an exact obverse of the previous item wherein there was a problem for which we were trying to solve versus sort of the ridiculousness of this situation. So thank you for your work.
Thanks so much, Pam.
All right, very good. Thank you for the presentation, any other questions? We're taking action, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll move staff's recommendation.
Okay, it's been moved, Chair will second.
Is this a, this is, is this a public hearing?
Yeah, I was going to say, could you open and close it, please?
Open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed to speak on the matter?
We do not.
Close the public hearing, thanks, thanks for the reminder. Okay, we still have a motion and a second on the table, so please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present, and may I confirm who made the second?
I did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay, item 53, you're acting as the Board of Supervisors, authorize the county chief fiscal officer to execute an equipment schedule number three with Bank of America Public Capital Corporation for the purchase of automated side-loading refuse collection vehicles for the Department of Waste Management and Recycling in an amount not to exceed 10.2 million, and authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by the resolution.
Good morning Colin.
Good morning, Sheriff Serna and Board of Supervisors, my name is Colin Bettis, I'm the County Debt Officer. The item before you now is a request to approve the issuance of the third in a series of short-term borrowings for fleet vehicles for the Department of Waste Management and Recycling. Per California Government Code, any borrowing of $100,000 or more shall be discussed and deliberated as a separate item. In the most recent rate-setting process for the Department of Waste Management and Recycling, the board had a desire to smooth rate increases over time. As part of that process, Department of Waste Management and Recycling started utilizing equipment lease purchase agreements to pay for some of the vehicles required to be purchased to comply with SB 1383, which required picking up compostable materials. This allows the department to spread the costs of the 21 side, automated side loader vehicles over the useful life of those vehicles. The equipment lease is a seven-year lease, not to exceed 10.2 million, with an interest rate from Bank of America that was the best, that was proposed at 3.57%. This will be a fixed-rate loan that is not an obligation of the general fund, but rather of the net revenues of the Department of Waste Management and Recycling. This concludes my presentation, and I request that the board consider staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Very good, thank you Colin. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this matter?
We do not.
All right, very good, then at this point.
I'll go ahead and move item number 53 for approval.
Okay, very good, is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
All right, very good. We are holding 54, 55 till 2.
So on to item 56, this is the Update on Behavioral Health Initiatives, the Community Assistance Recovery and Empowerment Court and Behavioral Health Services Act.
Hi there, Board, Tim Lutz, I'm going to do a little tap dance because Ryan thought, okay, there's one more item, I can run to the restroom. So, the presentation for Community Assistance Recovery and Empowerment Corps and BHSA, Ryan's going to walk through when he comes over, apologize for that.
Would you like us to stand in recess for a couple minutes, or?
He's been gone for a few minutes, he might be right here, but I don't, I, an odd circumstance, and I apologize for that.
No worries, if you can cover for him, cover for him.
Okay, I will, I can start off with Community Assistance Recovery and Empowerment, and when Ryan jumps in, I'll let him join.
Very good.
All right, so, the CARE Act, as, as we brought to the board last, last year to really implement this, this program across the state, it's really designed as a pathway for mental health and substance use disorder treatment for individuals who have schizophrenia spectrum disorder or other psychotic disorders. I think that's been one of the, the question marks of who qualifies under CARE Act. It is a little more limiting, but that also speaks to where we know drivers for people on the streets and homelessness, so this, this was a, a strong target population.
Tim, before you continue, Supervisor Hume, do you have a question?
Sure, I'm just trying to help you stall until Dr. Quist returns, but can you, do you know, or can you speak to why specifically schizophrenia was called out in the CARE Act and/or? Act and/or when it talks about other psychotic disorders, what, what the metric is used to determine diagnosis there?
So I'll speak first on the schizophrenia part. I mean, what we know certainly from people cycling in and out of justice involvement, cycling in and out of homelessness, but challenges with those in homes is that, you know, that is a common, really difficult to address treatment where you have a lot of times non-medication compliance. So what CARE was designed to do was kind of fill some of that void and gap to try and provide additional tools to incentivize those that might otherwise not be complying with medication to agree to those services voluntarily and target that population.
But why that disorder specifically? Because it would seem like there could be other situations wherein that same situation, where that same, you know, issue persists of resistance to treatment and/or medication.
Yeah. I don't know if you want to try and answer that question.
And by the way, it worked.
Yes.
Good job. You didn't...
Much appreciated.
You didn't know how efficient we were.
I actually asked if it was enough time, so I apologize. Ryan Quist, Behavioral Health Director. Am I picking up on that question? So I'm picking up on the question. We don't know exactly why that specific diagnosis. It came directly from the governor himself and his office regarding what their pick for the criteria for this. I will acknowledge that there have been a number of bills in the legislature considering expansion of it to consider other diagnoses. So far, none of those have passed, so we'll see if something happens along those regards.
Thanks.
All right, just start from the beginning. All right, well, good morning, everyone. I'm here to give you an update on a couple projects that have been going on, initiatives that have been going on here in Sacramento County. First, I have some brief updates on CARE Court. I hopefully have some time for questions and discussion, and then, and then I'll talk about BHSA, Behavioral Health Services Act. And again, time for some discussion if you'd like. So CARE Court is programmed, a new mechanism by which individuals can refer people into Behavioral Health Services. The criteria are that they are, have a diagnosis, we were just discussing, a diagnosis of schizophrenia or other schizophrenia spectrum disorders. It's for individuals who are not already stabilized in voluntary treatment. And the idea is that CARE Court, CARE Act is the least restrictive alternative. I will pause here for a second and just acknowledge that there are still some misconceptions regarding what the, the court process does. The court process does not compel individuals to participate in treatment, nor is the court able to compel individuals to take medications. What the court actually does, it actually is a court order for the county to provide the needed services. There are a number of people who can file a petition. This is the long list of people who can file petitions. It basically falls into three groups: family members, service providers, and first responders. So those are the folks that are able to file a petition.
Can I, can you interrupt real quick?
Absolutely.
I want to go back to what you just said earlier about the, the act does not compel the mandatory administration of psychotropics or other, other medications. But it does compel, if I heard you correctly, the county provide the services. Does it, what is the mechanism by which it legally compels or not someone then to respond affirmatively to the offer of the services? Because that is really, for me, kind of the crux of the issue.
That there's not, there's no compelling going on in terms of accepting the treatments. But, you know, there is a, we have seen, we call it the black robe effect, where if an individual is called before a judge, that, that experience by itself encourages conversation around what are the challenges that they're experiencing and why they were, why did they get called before the court? And then what are the challenges or barriers that are making it difficult for that individual in their attempts at participating in services? And I, we see, we see, we see a range of different reactions to those conversations. But we've been seeing some good, about two-thirds success.
I was gonna ask you if we actually have any, or if there is any, like statewide data, let's say as it relates to Laura's Law, because I think the same black robe effect is, is germane to that law that's been in existence now for, for years. It'd be interesting to understand what that effect does to, you know, encourage participation versus, you know, someone that's not, hasn't been exposed to that offering in terms of, you know, being before a judge and, and understanding that there's interest in trying to help the individual kind of in a, I guess, more legal and clinical atmosphere. So I don't know if the executive director in charge of social services would like to chime in. Looks like she does.
No, I just wanted to also just kind of build on what Dr. Quist is talking about. CARE Court is really just one tool in our toolbox. There is, there are a number of other pathways into involuntary care that Dr. Quist can address either now or just wanted to let the board know that we've been asked by you, Chair Serna. I know we have a homeless joint city-county meeting coming up, and I know you wanted Dr. Quist at that meeting to address some of the pathways into care. So there will be a fuller presentation on this on October 28th, but certainly Dr. Quist has all that information now if you have specific questions. Thank you.
Thank you for the reminder. And I'm glad that that's on everyone's radar for the joint meeting. I think it's actually gonna be one of the more critical elements of our collective discussion. So, thank you.
Thank you. One of the challenges that we've heard about in terms of making it more difficult to participate in this program is the paperwork. You have to actually file court, court documents. So we have tried to do our best to make those as accessible and easy to access as possible. If, for members of the public, if you have access to this PowerPoint in your, in the board's materials, and those are live links you can click on in order to travel to the relevant forms. In addition, if you want to do a Google search, if you Google searched Sacramento County CARE Court, the top two-ish results will be for the Sacramento Superior Court Self-Help Center, which has self-help materials available in order to complete the forms. The other one will be our Sacramento Behavioral Health Services website, which also has those same materials on how to complete the, complete the forms. Here in the county, so we went live in December, and we have established a small but mighty team of clinicians and peers who are doing this work. When a petition comes over from the court, they go out and find the individual, which is often a feat unto itself, but also then begin to engage and form a relationship with those individuals. Once individuals are identified for services through the court process, we then collaborate with our existing contracted providers to deliver those services in both our full-service partnership programs as well as our core outpatient programs. And this is the list of different types of services that are available for, for individuals who are engaging in those services.
Question before you leave the slide.
Sure.
I know that when we engage in our point-in-time counts, we're, we're given a script, a questionnaire tool, a survey instrument, if you will, from, from HUD to, you know, train the volunteers, deploy the volunteers who go out, ask the questions, and try and acquire that information of our homeless population. Is it, I guess this is a question for Ms. Katara here. Is it possible that we could use at least that, that exercise to also, at some point in that interaction with, with individuals, between the volunteers and the individuals, to give them some hard copy information about CARE Court? Just responding to what was said about sometimes it being the most difficult part of the job, which is kind of communicating what this, this new avenue is for, for folks that may need it.
Yeah, it's, it's always possible to distribute some information. We'd want to be judicious in what we distributed and how much and whatnot. But we can certainly look at opportunities to get information about our services and programs out there. So I will work with the departments and work with the homeless department to see if we can put something together.
I would also suggest that maybe we'd look into that certainly, because, you know, it's a, an important interaction that we're involved with every two years. What about, though, our various navigation activities, whether it be through Sacramento Steps Forward or elsewhere, which should be occurring daily? Is that something we can, we're doing, or if not, we could think about how we do better?
No, absolutely. And I can let Dr. Quist speak to the role of the HART team, which is the behavioral health team that goes out into the field and what they do. But they work very closely with our other outreach navigators in both the city and cities and unincorporated areas to get that information out and to make smooth linkages into Behavioral Health Services.
The other part I'll add is, you know, we redesigned our entire adult outpatient system, so we now have our 11 core sites throughout the county. Each one of them has a walk-in community wellness center. So if, if there are individuals that are voluntarily willing to take part in services, that is probably the best mechanism for them to, to start making relationships. We have the HART team that's actively going out and introducing themselves, engaging with individuals, offering them services. And then each of those core sites also have two outreach workers that we fund in order to work the area that is surrounding their sites in order to, once again, engage with individuals and invite them into services.
Would you agree, though, that maybe, that's great. That's good to hear. But would you agree that perhaps the best audience, the most appropriate audience perhaps, for that initial touch, if you will, would be maybe a family member in terms of CARE Court? So family member, you know, mom, dad, sister, brother. We, we understand, you know, you have a loved one that is maybe currently homeless and is suffering mental health or behavioral health challenges. Here, you know, here's what CARE Court is. Here's what it can do. How can we think about maybe looking at enhancing, you know, that interaction with the folks that are going to naturally be the advocate for the individual based on their familial connection?
We absolutely do that in terms of when individuals come to us, you know, we'll, we'll have a family member approach us and, and let us know that they have a family member that's needs services and not engaging in services. And we definitely share with them what their options are as it relates to all of them: assist outpatient treatment, CARE Court, and so forth.
Very good. Supervisor Rodriguez.
Hi, Dr. Quist. So I, I just want to be clear. So when, when we have, when we go out to, say, to meet with homeless individuals who are homeless, and we offer them services, are, are you talking about people who have the, all of them, or those with schizophrenia?
We offer services to anybody.
To anybody, okay.
Who meets our specialty mental health services criteria, which means the more serious challenges. And then we'll also help link them. If they have mild to moderate challenges, we'll also help link them to managed care providers to help get those services.
And do we find that people who are on the extreme level of schizophrenia, do, do they accept some of these services, or is part of their condition that they don't quite understand what is being offered to them so that they could accept it?
You're absolutely right that there is some challenge with individuals recognizing that they have a problem and that they need some support. But yes, there are other individuals, and it's often through relentless engagement, where our HART team, for example, will, you know, get to know them. And it might start out as here, I call it sandwich casework, you know, where you, you bring them a sandwich. Or you, we, we had a lot of success with backpacks, which had things like socks in them and just, you know, really simple supplies that, that, so yeah, we, we try to really engage with people. We do find that the HART team has the most successful with people who are currently sheltered in a somewhat stable environment. So our current safe stays have really been a great mechanism in order to establish relationships, put them someplace where they feel physically safe, and then be able to engage and develop those relationships before inviting them into services. So they definitely do, they are not limited just to schizophrenia, though. It's the...
Yeah. I'm, I'm a big supporter of Laura's Law, CARE Court. Help me understand this. When an individual has autism, the state comes in and becomes their guardian. Is that correct? With somebody who, like an adult who's with autism?
You're, that's gonna be a little bit out of my area of specialization. I'm, autism's not quite mental health.
You know, and, and where I'm heading is they become a guardian of the state. And there's a terminology that I just can't...
Yeah, it's a conservatorship. So essentially, for folks with autism spectrum disorder or other disorders that are not, do not have severe mental illnesses but do have other developmental disabilities, there is opportunities to evaluate them for a conservatorship.
Right.
We have the public guardian and conservator under DCFAST in the county, and so they would be evaluated. And if court mandated, they would be assigned a conservator.
Okay.
And probate.
And in this case...
Maybe? I don't know.
It could, it would be a probate conservatorship, yeah. Not LPS, not...
And so in, in this situation, I think, I think all of us up here would probably agree that allowing people with severe schizophrenia who cannot really fend for themselves, who end up committing crimes and oftentimes are probably sitting in our jails, why has, why is that different? People with schizophrenia are, or on the extremes level, are not able to care for themselves. But yet, we allow them to continue to make decisions for themselves that impact themselves or others. Help me understand that.
Individuals with schizophrenia would, if they are unable to care for themselves, their own food, shelter, clothing, they would be eligible for a conservatorship as well. That's the difference I was just trying to remember, was I know my, my folks, they would be under an LPS conservatorship. So if somebody had a diagnosis of schizophrenia and they went through the process of involuntary treatment while they're, for example, in the county-operated mental health treatment center, if they were identified as not being able to care for their own food, shelter, clothing, which is called grave disability, then, then they would be eligible for potentially progressing through the courts in order to get that conservatorship placed.
And that's one path. And then CARE Court is another path for, say, family members to help get somebody the help they need. Okay.
Correct. You got it. Uh-huh. And we're gonna talk a lot about that at the presentation that Siobhan was talking about.
Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Chair. I, I just want to kind of pick up on Supervisor Rodriguez's line of questioning here. And I certainly don't hold you accountable for the policies that we're implementing, given that a lot of these are set at the state and/or federal level. But there's just a semantic issue here that gets played out in application. And this goes back to what the Chair's line of questioning, I think, a little bit earlier was relative to the CARE Act, in that the, it only mandates the provision of county services. We are providing those services. We don't need to be told or mandated to provide those services. What we need is the acceptance of those services from the individuals who, who require them. And require is very different than eligible. If they are eligible, that does not suggest that they're going to take advantage of and actually utilize and be bettered by. And so, you know, it's just, it's, it's frustrating, and I appreciate, we may view this through a different lens, and I certainly respect people's civil liberties, but where the, the, free agency of the individual is given so much leeway that can have negative consequences on the rest of society and on themselves personally and on their families and their loved ones, et cetera. And so at some point, I would hope that cooler heads will prevail to where we can figure out a way to strike a better balance to get these folks, many of whom don't know that they're ill, the help that they need, without necessarily going back to draconian situations that maybe that we employed in the past. But there's gotta be a better way than what we're doing.
And I'll just add, and we'll be prepared with some data. We do a lot of what Dr. Quist was saying about LPS conservatorships. There are a lot of LPS conservates in the county, so we are using those other tools. I would envision CARE Court as being sort of off to the side, as being one tool that is, you're right, it's, it's not compelling the person to participate. But all of our other tools do, in fact, compel the person to participate. So this is a very narrow slice, and we're looking forward to that bigger presentation because I think it will sort of lay out the full picture of those tools that we're using on a daily basis alongside our partners.
All right, we've, our CARE Court program... We've, our Care Court program has had quite a bit of success working with the new availability of our behavioral health bridge housing and has been actively making placements into those safe stay communities, as well as our other behavioral health bridge housing. So that's been a success through this program. In implementation, we have developed a very strong and successful collaboration with all of our court-related partners. So on, from County Council represents our actual behavioral health in terms of helping us with the petition process. Public Defender represents individuals who are called respondents, who, for whom petitions have been filed. Of course, the judge is very much involved in helping to create an environment that is non-adversarial and supportive of the treatment process. And then also, big shout out and thanks to the Superior Court's Self-Help Center, which has developed resources and supports for individuals who are interested in filing petitions. Here are our numbers. These are numbers based on what I was, you know, I have to submit the PowerPoint a few months, a couple months in advance. So this is what was available at the time that the PowerPoint was submitted. We are now up to a total of 74 petitions that have been filed in Sacramento County. To give you a little bit of a context, wait, that's 74 that have been filed, and then 16 of them have been, clients have been accepted by the court. To give you a little bit of a context, Orange County, 3.1 million census, so that's almost twice the size we are. They've been going for a whole year longer than we have. We just started in December. And in Orange County, they have a total of 12 that have gotten to that point, up to this point. So in the few months that we've been up, we have 16 who have been accepted by the court into the Care Court process.
Excuse me, Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was going to ask questions about this later, how we compare with some of these other counties that were part of the first cohort, right? Orange County was in the first cohort of Care Court counties. What are they doing so differently than what we're doing here?
You know, it's really an interesting dynamic that even coming into this, I wasn't sure what to predict because there's so many different decisions points. There's the behaviors and decisions being made by petitioners, there's the decisions and behaviors being made by the respondents. Are they accepting voluntary care? If they accept voluntary care, then they no longer need to go through the court process. Then there's also the behavior of the courts themselves. What is the public defender's perspective on this program? Do they think that this is something that's in their client's best interest? Or do they see this as something that is maybe going on the edge of their civil liberties? Depends on that public defender perspective. There are so many different perspectives that play into this. I've seen some counties where the courts are not approving very many, like, very few that are getting approved. And then ours is probably, probably in the middle-ish. I don't know. I don't have, like, real firm data from every single county, but I don't think we're doing, like, way more than a lot of other counties. I think we're probably middle of the road in terms of how many.
Yeah, I appreciate, I just would not have expected there to be such a divergence between us and Orange, I mean, you would expect Orange County to have a lot more. How about Riverside County, Ryan?
I don't have their numbers. I started doing my research on those numbers this morning when I was given a heads-up that this question might come up.
I think I'd also be interested in Alameda, some of the typical surrogate counties, is that what you look to?
Sounds good.
Thank you.
And then, and just really quick, one note, you can't quite see in this data, but the, if you, so there's, once the petitions are made, now there's a lot of, a process that has to go through. And it's really not until the court makes the decision about the individual going into care versus getting dismissed by the court. We're looking at about two-thirds of those decisions being in favor of the actual, of actually going through the care program. So that gives you a little bit of a context. And I think some of that also makes a difference in other behaviors. If people hear that they have to do all this paperwork and then it's not going to result in Care Court program anyway, then maybe they don't do the paperwork. But we're seeing actually, you know, good two-thirds are ending up in the program. So I'm hoping that also affects the behavior of folks wanting to file petitions. Here's some successes and challenges that we've had so far. I think we have had some good success with individuals getting into services on a voluntary basis. We've been able to place some people in our bridge housing, which we think are, think are great. We're making, we're linking people with our existing core and FSP programs. We've established good collaboration with different referral points where different organizations can refer to us. Correctional Health, Public Guardians, Courts, and our other co-response teams are good referral points. Out of those that are getting filed, those petitions that are getting filed, the majority, the most frequent petitioners are family members. The second most, though, are our inpatient hospitals. So we are seeing some good referrals coming from our actual service providers in the community. We have great teams, including both clinicians and peers, and we're also being able to link to other programs like assisted outpatient treatment when appropriate. And we really are thankful to the courts for their collaboration. Judge Brown has been an amazing collaborator in this implementation. We do see some challenges. We don't, still don't have all the housing we need. That's probably not a surprising message. And not always does the housing meet the needs of the individual. So if somebody's having challenges, challenging behaviors, it's, are difficult to find the exact match in terms of the housing for that individual. We are having staffing challenges. We're having difficulty finding the individuals. Sometimes to find the individuals, the team has to go into questionably safe environments, which requires support for those, for our team members. And then we're also seeing co-occurring substance use is also a play.
Can you expand a bit on the, you know, the challenge of going into quote-unquote "dangerous" environments?
I didn't, I, questionably safe environments is, because what we're doing is, you know, these are, we're being, the team's being told, okay, well, he's in this encampment in this general area, and then the team has to go out there into that area without really knowing the area themselves well or knowing the other people in that area. And so they're, they're, they're having to...
So let me ask it this way. So I think you're here for our budget deliberations, and we had a lot to say about and hear about the sheriff's funding commitment for HART. And I guess I'd ask the county executive, do we have any understanding of where that is in terms of, or for you, Mr. Jones, where that, where that is in terms of existing or not? Or has it been reprioritized? Because I know enough about going in or near encampments myself from past experience that, yes, it can be, I'll use the word dangerous, and it's not just from people. It could be loose animals, it could be a whole host of things, could be needles on the ground. So if that is actually having this known adverse effect on our ability to just contact and begin the initial education about what, what we offer in terms of the suite of behavioral health services, I'd like to understand better the connection of, you know, are HART teams or not being with the folks that are going out and, and what that really means. So I'm not sure who wants to respond here.
I'll let Mr. Jones answer it. I know we've been talking about it since the budget, and we've been working with the sheriff's office to work on some plans for that, but I'll let Mr. Jones respond to that.
Yes. Thank you. So Eric Jones, Deputy County Executive, Public Safety and Justice. So I've been in discussion with the sheriff since the budget hearing when we spoke about the HART team, some of the funding being restored, and there was mention specific to the Parkway. And so I'm in discussions with them on how they can commit to that, since I've also worked with county council, that we can't really interrupt into a contract with them where it would at least be unenforceable. So they did commit to me verbally, the undersheriff, that they would be concentrating on the Parkway.
So what about our ranger force? Is there, in light of HART being, it sounds like still in a very ambiguous place, is there any perspective change to how our park rangers are being or could be deployed to provide some, some safety for the folks that need to or should be going into these camps?
Dave DeFondi, Deputy County Executive. More than happy to chat with Liz about that. We haven't talked specifically in the recent past about, you know, changing the way the rangers operate, but if there is needed resources, the rangers are on the Parkway all the time, addressing homeless encampments constantly.
I would argue they actually know the encampments and the people in the encampments better than we all think.
Extremely well, extremely well. I think the board's very well aware that Liz and the rangers have made that a gigantic priority for their operation, and they do know the Parkway and the people on it extremely well. So they're well situated to do that work.
I would like to encourage that if we're not getting the, the appropriate agencies, all of whom have just been referenced, together to enhance safety for our people that need to interact with the folks that need the help, you know, time's a-wastin'. We need to, we need to do that.
Supervisor, I'll just add, we're committed to doing that. We'll pull the groups together and have a discussion with them and see what we can do to improve that safety. Thank you.
Supervisor Rodriguez.
I have a comment and a question. My first comment is, having gone out to some of these encampments with nonprofits and our police department, it was, it was, it worked well when the nonprofits who work with trying to get individuals out of homelessness into services, they know them, they know them by name, just like our cops did, but they, nonprofits know them by name, they know their situation, they are very warm to these individuals because of their compassion to their situations. And it was always great to have public safety along with those when we would go in. So I just want to give them that feedback that our nonprofits are, do amazing work in our communities, and ensuring that there's some kind of that public-private partnership in tackling this issue is important. My question is, so hypothetically, if we could get individuals who have, who are on the spectrum of having severe schizophrenia, and say we looked at our jails and identified those individuals who probably should not be in jail but should be in some kind of a care facility, maybe indefinitely for the rest of their lives, who would pay for that?
So...
Like, where would funding come from?
We would pay for that.
County?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that was my question.
Yep. And we do, excuse me, and we do leverage our local community-based organizations, relationships with individuals whenever we possibly can. We recognize the value of those relationships as well.
Okay.
Okay, so last couple slides, just some resources for general public if they'd like to take advantage of those. And then these are some email addresses for those who can accept or answer questions that, that may come up from public. And that's the end of my Care Court presentation.
Very good. Thank you. Any, I know we, you know, standard operating procedure here, we interrupt as you go along, but are there any other questions from my colleagues? Seeing none? Great. Thank you.
Great.
So does that then conclude the entirety of the update? Okay, very good. Supervisor Desmond.
Sorry, I apologize. I saw another PowerPoint in here in the, in the, was there another?
Yeah, I'm doing BHSA.
Did it include the...
Oh, okay. I'll, I'll...
That was my question.
I'll hold off. Okay, sorry, I was confused.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Next PowerPoint. So this is an update on Behavioral Health Services Act, also known as Prop 1. So this was a voter initiative that passed in 2024 and is now going to go live July 1st, 2026. So when that law went into effect, it, it was rather quickly drafted legislation that left a lot of unanswered questions. The law actually acknowledged that there were a lot of unanswered questions and directed the State Department of Healthcare Services to provide additional secondary guidance, answering those types of questions regarding how the various funds can be used. And so we're just now getting that information finalized. It's not all finalized, but we have enough that we can work on it. So today, I'm giving you an update on where we are in that planning process. So just as a reminder, the funding source started out as MHSA, Mental Health Services Act, two decades ago. It's a 1% tax on millionaires, and those funds go directly towards, historically towards, mental health services. The proposition that passed made changes to the law. It does not provide any new funds. It makes new rules about how we can use those existing funds. So basically, a summary of the changes, it does require us to have one coordinated plan across all of our funding. Historically, for MHSA, our, our annual reports that you saw, you got to see every year, those would really focus on our MHSA-funded programs only. Under BHSA, it's now requiring us to put together what they're calling an integrated plan, which is going to report on all of our funding sources. There is a new requirement that we dedicate 30%. So remember, no new funds, but we're going to take our existing funds, and we're now required to use 30% of those funds specifically for housing interventions. And so that's a new focus of the, of the BHSA. We're also being asked to focus on people with the most significant behavioral health needs. And so we are no longer going to have a funding bucket for prevention. Prevention activities are going to be the responsibility of the state under their prevention initiative, so that's not going to be one of the allowable uses for our BHSA funds. And then we're going to also be setting goals and be reporting to the state on more, more additional outcomes.
I'm sorry, does that then, does it legally prohibit our ability to engage prevention? Or is it just mean that we can continue to do prevention on top of what the state is expected to do? I mean, it just sounds bizarre.
Right?
Right? Right? We're, we're...
The BHSA funds are not supposed to be used for prevention. We can do early intervention. As a matter of fact, we're required to do early intervention. So one of the buckets, there's three new buckets. Three new buckets are 30% for housing, 35% for full-service partnership programs, 35% for everything else, behavioral health, service, and supports. In the BHSS bucket, 50% of those have to go to early intervention funds, programs. So we still can do early intervention, but there is language that says we can't use it for certain activities.
Give me, give me an example.
There's language that says we're not supposed to use it, for example, for anti-stigma campaigns, which of course Sacramento County has long been...
That's been, that's been a hallmark of, of what we've been doing for well over a decade now. I mean, you're wearing the green on your lapel.
I know. And you should have heard me doing the advocacy two years ago when this was, when this was being contemplated.
Okay.
It's really unfortunate.
It is unfortunate because I'm a big fan of the anti-stigma efforts because that is the, for me, that, that seems like it's the most obvious breakthrough that you can have with someone is getting them finally to a place where they're, they're not afraid to come out from the shadow of, you know, this perception that they'll be criticized and stigmatized for, you know, having legitimate mental and behavioral, behavioral health issues, so...
Supervisor Serna, I'll just add that it doesn't preclude us from using some other dollars for that, such as behavioral health realignment, but we just have to be really cautious because as these dollars get shifted and our, our expectations are greater on the county, we just have to be cautious about how we use those. But if it is a board priority, certainly we can use other dollars for that as well.
Yeah, I think at the, at another appropriate time where may we do a little deeper dive on this, I would like to understand if we're going to be cautious about it, what's at stake, both if we choose not to fund, for instance, anti-stigma, or if we choose using a different funding source. And of course, every, you know, every time we look at our funding decisions, we know there are consequences. So I appreciate your cautionary note, but that's something that I would like to know more about.
And we're going to cover that quite a bit. In a minute, I'm going to tell you about our planning process, and there's definitely going to be a point where we have those tough conversations.
Okay, thank you.
So just really quick, I do want to zoom in on the, the one bucket that's for housing interventions because this is a new requirement. So the new requirement... for housing interventions because this is a new requirement. So the new requirement is 30% of our total BHSA funds have to be used for housing interventions. Of those funds, 50% have to be used for those who are chronically homeless. So this is a new, uh, responsibility. To give you a little bit of a context, we were already doing a lot of that. This is, um, I, this needs a huge asterisk on it because this is constantly changing as we're coming to both understand, oops, understand the requirements and what is allowable in each of the different buckets, um, because the, the requirements and secondary guidance has just been released by DHCS over the last few weeks, and we're still getting to know what those requirements tell us. So this is probably going to change before, as a matter of fact, this has already changed from the materials that I'm, um, presenting to community in our, in our different planning processes. But basically, we were already doing $5.5 million a year under MHSA. Our total amount that we project in the housing intervention bucket will be $31.5 million. And then behavioral health bridge housing were, was an opportunity, but it's one-time funds that were used for us to create new capacity for behavioral health transitional housing. Those one-time funds obviously are going to expire. And so the, and the governor's administration has been very, um, clear that they're, they're hoping and expecting that our BHSA dollars will be used in order to help maintain those, which makes sense to some extent anyway. Um, that, so to give you an idea, it's actually now, um, estimates are around $22 million that are, um, it will cost for us to, uh, continue to maintain our existing behavioral health housing that we've, uh, that we've created. So we're already have enough initiatives that's above that. Now, it is not to say that we can't make prioritization decisions around how we want to use those $31.5 million, but just want to give you a little bit of a context. This isn't a whole lot of brand-new money, is what really I'm trying to, trying to say. Um, just to give you an idea, here's, I'm not going to go through all these, but this is what the current MHSA, um, components are that we're already paying for under MHSA. That adds up to that 15.5 million. So we're already doing quite a bit there. And then this is our, uh, current, uh, operating expenses for our, um, behavioral health's bridge housing. Again, this is now up to 22 million because we've put, uh, a significant amount more money in the sober living bucket. So that, that recently went up before, since I put this PowerPoint on, uh, up. So, um, we're still continuing to, you know, refine what this is going to look like. Um, one of the other requirements of BHSA is that we, um, include, uh, we've always had a community planning process under MHSA. What it does under BHSA is it takes our community, uh, planning process and requires us to include even more, um, different voices and groups. Um, and so I'm not going to read through this, but this gives you a little bit of an idea, the, the type of input that we are going to be taking in order to, um, provide us, uh, inform us in how we establish our integrated plan going forward. We need to include a lot of different voices and, uh, perspectives in how we design our delivery system. With, uh, uh, emphasis on diverse, uh, viewpoints, including those who are working with underserved racially and ethnically diverse communities, our LGBTQ plus communities, uh, victims of domestic abuse and sexual abuse, and, um, people with lived experience of homelessness.
Dr. Quest, could you?
Yes.
Could you go back now two slides? That, there were. Um, so, uh, this says must be engaged. Under that third column from the left, it says labor representative organizations. Does that mean that we are obligated by law to, is that a, is that a reference to like a meet and confer kind of obligation? What?
It's not quite a meet and confer, but it's an, an opportunity for them to provide feedback and thoughts around if they see priorities, uh, for how we should be thinking about the delivery of our system. Recognizing all of these different perspectives, we have to include all of them. So it's not one that gets more weight than any other. It's that we need to be listening to feedback from all of these different groups.
But is the onus on us then to, to reach out to all whatever 27 bargaining units that we have to say, hey, this, this new law says we have to at least do what we're doing now, which is outreach to you to, on this subject?
Yeah.
And they, and they then can choose to engage back with us or not?
Exactly.
Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, a follow-up on that. So this is, this was in the proposition?
Yes.
It was this prescriptive.
Mm-hmm.
Wow. Um, and then with public safety partners, that, that's front, that's law enforcement agencies includes them as well.
Mm-hmm.
Because obviously not providers of any services, but whether it's a city PDE or sheriff or park rangers, obviously I think they have a, a really great perspective to provide.
Yeah.
On where the challenges are, you know, getting somewhere and how confusing it is for them to help get people into the right place. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you. So the, we're going to be collecting inform, um, information and feedback from the community in two phases. Uh, we're now, we're currently in the first phase. We've already started. Um, and in this first phase, we're basically going out to our community and we're calling them community conversations in order to solicit information on what do individual, what do folks see as our existing behavioral health strengths, our glows, where are things that we're actually doing well and we want to make sure we keep doing, as well as, uh, where are our grows? Um, in terms of where can we make further system improvements? Again, this is no new money, so we're not looking at necessarily rolling out a whole bunch of new programming, but how can we make, um, adjustments to our existing programming in order to make sure that we're continuing to do some improvements within the community? Uh, we already started, before I move on from that, we already started this process. Our first one was last week, I want to say the 17th. Um, we went to the California Automobile Museum. We had about, I think, over 130 people show up. So we've already started doing our, our feedback sessions. Anybody in the public who is interested in participating in this feedback, uh, process, please feel free to email, uh, bhsa@saccounty.gov. So that's BH, BHSA, Behavioral Health Services Act, @saccounty.gov, and, um, ask for information. Our next one is going to be July 30th, and this one's going to be a virtual session where we're going to be also going and soliciting input around our glows and grows.
Dr. Quest, you said you had 100 people, over 100 people turn out?
Mm-hmm.
That seems great. I mean, so tell me a little bit more. Who, what, who, how would you characterize who's there? Who, are these family member, who?
We, um, we, we had sign-in sheets, and I haven't gotten, uh, full tally on the sign-in sheets yet regarding the different perspectives, but I, just looking at the room, I saw folk, I saw family members, I saw, um, consumers, I saw NAMI, I saw, um, I saw representatives from emergency departments, I saw service providers. Um, we, we had a really broad range of different folks that were, and we, we have this established distribution list from all of our years of MHSA planning. And so we've really blasted it out far and wide to everybody who's been following us and, you know, participating in our various, uh, community stakeholder, uh, input sessions over the years. And so, um, we really had some good turnout.
Yeah, that, it sounds like a wonderful turnout. So congratulations on, uh, getting the word out.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, can I follow up on that? Do you have a flyer you could make available to each of us that we can easily put into?
Absolutely.
Good idea newsletter blast?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Um, so then phase two, what we're going to do is we're going to come back and we're going to say, here's what we heard from y'all, and here's how we're planning on including that feedback into our plan. Um, and so we'll be doing that, uh, after we finish this first phase. And then ultimately, we need to have a plan approved by you all, um, before we submit that to, um, the state. So, uh, basically over the next few months, we're going through our community planning process. We're really excited to hear from community around what their feedback and input is regarding, um, how we can continue to do the great work we've already, already been doing, as well as how we can continue to make further improvements. And that's the completion of my, my presentation. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Quest. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Dr. Quest. Appreciate so much the work you do. And I'm, I'm thinking about, um, the run-up to October and how we're going to be having a deeper dive into this with a lot of our city partners who aren't nearly as well-versed, I think, as we are. And I don't consider myself very, very well-versed, but I think you have to really simplify it. And I, and I know at one point you created a, um, a spread, I don't know, I don't think you did it for me, but it was a spreadsheet, and it kind of laid things out from voluntary treatment and, and inpatient, acute inpatient, compelled treatment. Do you remember that?
Yeah, and we call it our continuum.
Okay, the behavioral health continuum, yeah. And I just think that is, that was really a great document, helped, helped people understand that continuum. And I think something that would be really helpful, especially for our, our city partners, is to kind of have a context about, at each level, what, what is, where's the funding come from? What's it funding? And maybe some examples, you know, make their community campus, how's that funded? I mean, the, the bridge housing that we're doing and different places throughout the, the county. I just think really to, to show our city partners in context where that money is going, uh, throughout the county is going to be really important for that conversation, whether that's to support navigator or outreach efforts, you know, in, in different jurisdictions, whatever. It's that, just a thought. Thank you.
Yeah, behavioral health, um, funding is really complex. So I think, I think the, letting them know the full continuum is definitely the, sometimes it's hard to track which, which each, which dollar is coming from where and going where, but you're absolutely right.
What I'd like to suggest, um, just occurred to me, um, Supervisor Rodriguez, myself, Mayor McCarty, and City Councilmember Eric Guerra, are, we continue to, um, try to, uh, hone in on what the agenda is going to look like for October 28th for our joint meeting and, um, what we expect to get from it, all of us. And hopefully we have, uh, good attendance and participation. That's always, uh, an interest when you engage something like, um, like this. But, uh, what I would encourage my colleagues here to think about is, um, given this, you know, what we've learned just this morning with this, this great presentation, you know, if, if there's are some nuance to behavioral and mental health services in particular that we want to understand, like, uh, the great suggestion just made by Supervisor Desmond, um, please let us know or, you know, don't even feel obligated to go through us necessarily, maybe just work with Siobhan. But in the context of leading up to that meeting, I, I would encourage us all to, to think kind of, hey, what, you know, what is it about the uniqueness of our service provision, especially because we're going to have many other city, you know, many other municipal leaders, uh, there with us, sitting at the dais and perhaps in the audience. Uh, what is it that we want to take advantage of in that moment to really, um, and this is not intended to belittle or, or be dismissive of, uh, municipal elected leadership, but it, it just is what it is. Cities aren't designed to provide behavioral health services, counties are. And I think demystifying, uh, and perhaps, um, making sure that we, uh, as, as accurately and carefully as we can, use that time, a joint meeting with the other cities and the city of Sacramento to, to really do the deeper dive that we sometimes miss relative to the, those services that, that we provide solely. So that there, you know, if nothing else, we all walk away from that with, uh, kind of a better mutual understanding of who's doing what, I guess is where I'm going with it. So, good. Supervisor Hume?
Yeah, Chair, I, I just want to bring up, uh, I realize it's not agendized for this item, but there's been a couple of mentions of this October 28th date. I, for one, would like to see us move that date up if we can. I don't know why we've pushed it back to October.
Believe me, we have, um, done a, a lot of work around making sure it's going to work out conveniently for, um, the other, I mean, it's 20 elected people. Um, and it really started with, uh, an interest expressed by the city of Sacramento. So there's been a lot of work done to get to that date, and I, I don't want to touch it with a 10-foot pole at this point. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. But, but you, you just mentioned you're going to be having some other meetings in the run-up to that.
Well, just to, just to finalize the agenda.
Oh, that's.
So I'm, you know, I don't want it to come across as being like, so exclusive that we don't want your input about like what you hope to get out of it.
Right.
Please, please do share that with us.
Right. And I, I, um, and I know, I think you mentioned there's going to be discussions with other city managers. And it's not like there won't be other discussions happening with city representatives in the run-up to that, uh, which I think is important. Um, but it just occurred to me when we were just having the, the previous, previous conversation about having to educate, I think, the other cities is in the, in the course of the, uh, whether it's a meeting with our local state center or the prior mayor and the city of Sacramento, there's a lot they don't know about the behavioral health funding mechanisms and what it goes to fund. I remember in the, in the two-by-four for the partnership agreement, it was almost like an, an epiphany by everybody when, when they had a, a presentation about this very thing. They, they really had no idea what we were funding in their jurisdiction in terms of behavioral health, so.
And let's remember too, that, um, you know, we can be fleeting, so meeting that, you know, electeds come and go, and so we have new faces. And, and so that's always a, a good reminder to, uh, let's not assume that everyone understands and knows thoroughly, um, you know, again, the, the nuance of, of what it is that, I think, the county's responsible for, especially given the fact we have new directives through new state law that we're trying to implement. All right. Uh, any other questions? This is, uh, we're, we're just receiving this presentation, and we do appreciate, uh, the conversation. I'm glad it, it took place. Um, and, uh, it will be ongoing. Um, so again, thanks, you, Dr. Quest, and Tim, and Siobhan for your work leading up to the, to the presentation.
And Supervisor, I'd just add that, um, when we first started with the care court in December, you had asked that we come back every six months. So given your recent comment, it sounds like we'll be back in about another six months to provide another update to you.
Terrific. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have anyone sign to speak on this matter?
We do not.
Okay. Very good. Which brings us to the conclusion of our morning?
No, if you don't mind, could we take your nominations and appointments?
Sure.
Okay, that would be item 57. Um, we are continuing to August 5th, the Carmichael Community Planning Advisory Council, Disability Advisory Commission, Elk Grove, Kasumna Cemetery District, South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council, continuing to August 19th, County Service Area 4B, Slough House, Wilton, Kasumnas, County Service Area 4C, Delta, In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee, the Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee, Natoma's Community Planning Advisory Council, and Sacramento County Youth Commission. And for your first matter, we have the Carmichael Recreation and Park District.
Please reappoint Joe Levitt and continue the remainder to August 5th.
Okay, Children's Coalition.
Please continue to September 9th.
Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council. Supervisor Desmond?
Please nominate Egiro Okoro to fill Jesse Garcia's seat and continue the remainder to August 19th.
Thank you. Supervisor Hume?
I'd like to nominate Daniel Reyes and continue the remainder to September 9th.
Thank you. Developmental Disabilities Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue the item to August 19th.
Mission Oaks Recreation and Park District.
Please reappoint Patricia Todd and Michael Tucker.
Thank you. North Highlands Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue to August 5th.
Rio Linda, Alberta Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue to August 5th.
Sacramento County Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board. I'll start with Chair Serna.
I'd like to reappoint Clara Armstrong and, uh, waive the process.
Second.
Unanimous vote with those members present. Um, we'll skip over District, well, District 2 has a request to appoint Kiara Yates and to waive the process, but I'll defer to the chair to make that motion.
You have that on good authority through the, uh, District 2 Chief of Staff?
Uh, yes.
Okay, then I would, uh, move the nomination and look for a second.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present. Supervisor Desmond?
Please continue to August 5th.
Supervisor Rodriguez?
Please continue to August 19th.
Supervisor Hume?
Please continue to August 19th.
Thank you. Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee, Chair Serna?
I'd like to reappoint Joseph Wilson and waive the process.
Second.
Okay, unanimous vote with those members present. Uh, and we do not have any applicants for Supervisor 2, and so they're asking to continue that to August 19th. Supervisor Desmond?
Please continue to August 19th.
And Supervisor Hume?
Also continue to August 19th.
Thank you. Sacramento Environmental Commission.
Please continue to August 5th.
Okay, and that concludes your nominations. Thank you.
All right, very good. So that concludes our morning.
Yes.
Very good, thank you. So we do have closed session?
And return at 2:00 for those two items.
Correct. So we will, uh, then stand in recess till 2:00 PM. Okay, I'd like to call back to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, July 22nd, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll and reestablish a quorum?
Good afternoon, Supervisors Desmond?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Hume?
Here.
Serna?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Very good, thank you. First item, please.
Uh, we are going to item 54. This is the RK Grocery and Food Market PCN, a request for a public convenience or necessity letter from the Board of Supervisors regarding a Type 21 off-sale beer, wine, and spirits liquor license. The- The application is at the existing store on 4901 Auburn Boulevard in the Carmichael Community.
Good afternoon, Kimber.
Good afternoon.
I understand you have a new title behind your name, relatively new title, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, well, congratulations.
Thank you.
You are our newest principal planner in charge of current planning, if I'm not mistaken.
That's right.
So congratulations on that.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right, I do have a PowerPoint. Here we go. Okay, so I'll be presenting the RK Grocery and Food Market PCN to you all today. This project was processed by Irving Huerta, who's our associate planner in Team East. So just want to give a little kudos to him. But as the clerk said, this property is located at 4901 Auburn Boulevard. It's approximately 180 feet southwest of the intersection of Auburn Boulevard, College Oak Drive, and Amber Lane in the Foothill Farms community. The applicant has applied to ABC for a type 21 off-sale liquor license for RK Grocery and Food Market to sell beer, wine, and spirits, and it is an existing specialty market. The market consists of an existing 3,720 square foot commercial building, and ABC did identify that the applicant's liquor license request is within a geographic area having an undue concentration of licenses, and that would also create a law enforcement problem based on local crime rates. Therefore, the applicant is requesting a public convenience or necessity letter from you all today. The site is zoned general commercial and is surrounded by commercial zoning and land uses. The property is also located within the North Highlands Environmental Justice Community. The property is within Census Track 7503, which has a baseline authorization of three off-sale licenses. Currently, the Census Track has six off-sale licenses, and so it is considered over-concentrated. Within a one-mile radius, there are 16 establishments that are allowed to do off-sale alcohol sales. Also on this one-mile radius map, we analyzed the surrounding area for sensitive uses and vacant lots. We did identify several potential sensitive uses within the one-mile radius. This includes schools and daycare centers. And then the nearest vacant parcel is approximately 165 feet west of the subject site along Amber Lane and is zoned general commercial. The property is also within a sheriff's district that has an average crime rate exceeding 20%, more than the average crime, the average number of reported crimes as determined from all crime reporting districts. The project was first reviewed by the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms CPAC on July 13th of 2022. At the time, business licensing had issued a letter stating that an inspector found the operator selling beer, wine, and spirits without a valid ABC liquor license and was also in violation of the amount of sales floor dedicated to tobacco and tobacco paraphernalia products. The CPAC at the time did note that there were ample alcohol retailers in the area, and they voted to continue the item to a future date so that the applicant could work, continue to work with business licensing to resolve the violation. So the project came back to the CPAC in October of 2022 after the violations had been corrected, and the CPAC did ultimately vote to recommend approval of the PCN request. So although the CPAC recommended approval, the area is heavily over-concentrated, as I stated. There is many sensitive uses nearby, and it is within a high-crime area. And we also did receive a conditional protest letter from the Sheriff's Department. It is also inconsistent with an EJ Element policy regarding controlling over-concentration of liquor licenses. So based on all of this information and staff's review, we are recommending denial of the PCN request. We do not feel the applicants have demonstrated that the proposed sale of alcohol can be accomplished in a manner that sufficiently addresses or eliminates objections received and negative impacts identified in the review. Further, the applicants have not demonstrated that the public convenience or necessity of this liquor license outweighs the objections and negative impacts identified. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation. I'm available for questions, and we do have the applicant in attendance as well.
Very good, thank you, Kimber. We have a comment or question from Vice Chair Rodriguez.
Kimber, can you elaborate a little more on sensitive uses? Or, did you mention sensitive, what, what exactly does that mean?
Yeah, so we include, the sensitive uses that we look at in regards to alcohol licenses include schools, daycare centers, substance abuse services, and homeless services. So the information that we look at is collected using Assessor data, and because of that, the information may not be complete, but those are the sensitive uses that we look at, and those are ones that we've had discussions with board members in the past and also CPACs on being ones that are a particular of concern located close to a number of alcohol sales.
So after the applicant went through its, their process, the CPAC did approve this?
They recommended approval ultimately, yeah.
Okay, and then the third question I have is, the Sheriff's Department gave a letter of, a list of 11 requirements that they would, that they would have to meet. Were those met?
So we're not allowed, we're not able to put, put conditions on the PCN letter itself. So basically what happens is that the sheriff will have to forward these conditions to ABC when ABC is reviewing the liquor license, and then they work with ABC directly to either add or not add these conditions of approval. So that might be a better question for the applicant to see if they will be adding these to the liquor license.
And just to confirm, there is no liquor license at this premise, correct, today?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Kimber? Seeing none, thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have folks signed up to speak on this matter?
We do.
Okay.
And our first speaker is Diane Kiefer.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Do you want to hear from the applicant before you have public comment?
Sure, sure. Does the applicant wish to address the board?
Yes, but this woman's already approached, so I'm not going to.
No, I'm, I'm giving you the opportunity to, to speak first. It was my fault, so.
Ms. Kiefer?
Do you want to speak?
Yes, I, I do, but just to be polite, I'll let her, I'll let her speak. Oh, okay, sure. Thank you very much.
My bad, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Jeff Kravitz. Been a while since I've appeared here. In this matter, I'd like to first answer the question asked by Supervisor Rodriguez. We did have a statement from our position, which I gave to planning, and they told me they would pass it out to members of the board, so I hope you have seen that. And the answer to the question on the petition for the conditional license is yes, we've agreed to all of those conditions. So the license that we would be getting if a PCN was issued would have all of those conditions on it, which include that the sale would only be from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. In reality, they don't open till 10, till 10:00 or 11:00, so that really wouldn't be an issue. And one of the things I want to address is the environmental justice issue, which states that, you know, alcohol usage should be controlled. We believe the Sheriff's Department has imposed sufficient controls on them, and we're willing to do whatever else the county would want. We understand we're in a tad of a, sort of a catch-22 situation, as the county cannot put any additional conditions on or have any other enforcement because of the fact that we do not have to get a conditional use permit to do this. If we did, we'd get one and we'd agree to whatever the county wanted. On the issue of the environmental justice, they are running a store, and it's very difficult to do. They provide, they have a food service that they have, they have a license to provide cooked food there, which they do. Lot of it is, people come in, a lot of it is for takeout services that they have through DoorDash. And actually, they are open practically all night long. They, they, they have people come and mostly pickups of food, and they deliver it. And then they sell other food items. They also serve the, the community, and they have a diverse food service of, from international food service. And if they have a liquor license, their goal is to do the same thing, to have alcohols from various countries and so forth, to be a little bit more diverse and give people something that isn't available. So if they, at this point, they've been fighting for this for a number of years. To give a little background, there's a lottery system, they succeeded in the lottery system, they were awarded a license by ABC, and this process began, and for various reasons, it's taken a while to get here. They really are not making a profit. They cannot continue. So if this fails, the, you know, the odds are they'll go out of business. What you'll have is an empty storefront. You'll have another place not selling food. So that would harm the community. It would create more of a food desert, not less of a food desert. So yeah, I, we think we have to look at the entire situation as to what they, what they do provide and what they can provide. They need this license for the purposes of making a profit. If, the way business is in the world, alcohol has a much higher markup than other products, just the way the world is. And therefore, they'd be able to, to make a profit doing that. They don't intend on their business being only a liquor store. Right now, in the business, they have a, they have a kitchen that is cooking food and serving it. They're not taking that out, they're not going to do any of that. They're just going to add some alcohol to their services. The hours will be restricted that they serve, and they will do anything so that they can continue to operate. And we really think that if the goal is to allow diverse communities to have successful businesses, the county should approve this letter and let them go forward. And they've operated, by the way, they operate at night, and I'll tell you, they've not had any crime problem. That doesn't mean there's not crime in the area, but their particular experience of it is, they haven't had that. They've, they've put in new lighting, they're going to put in more lighting if they can go forward and have a successful business. So that's what they want to do. They just want to be a good, a good neighbor, a good member of the community, and provide fresh food for people and, and make a profit. Can't run a business if you can't make money. That's how the system works. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Rodriguez?
Yeah, I have a question for you, Jeff. So I get it, you know, I get, these are tough times and, you know, businesses are struggling and suffering, and I try to support capitalism as much as I can. So this location currently right now is a convenience store slash food, like a restaurant?
Yes, it's, it's a, they have a service counter where they serve food. Most of, most of the food service right now is in the nature of DoorDash, which is a huge profit maker for all food businesses now, but they operate, you start around 11 o'clock, right? Yeah. And, and then they, but they stay open all night long because DoorDash orders come in, yeah.
What percent of alcohol is expected at this location?
They're, they're expecting to only have 10% to 20% of their sales be alcohol.
Okay, and then I just have one, one question. So they were selling alcohol without a license prior to, can you give me a little background on how that came to be?
Well, that was actually a holdover from the prior tenants, and that's why they were able to get the vote of, of the community in favor of it. They cured that problem. And, I mean, it took place a long time ago, and I wasn't their attorney at the time, but this is my understanding of what happened.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further questions for the applicant? All right, seeing none, thank you. Okay, now you'll hear from others. Madam Clerk, did we get a speaker slip for the applicant?
No.
Okay, so if we could get that, that would be helpful for the record.
Members of the board, my name is Diane Kiefer. I am the Vice President of the Foothill Neighborhood Association, as well as a founding member of the Foothills, recently formed CPAC. It is my contention and are my constituents, constituents and neighbors, that we do not need another facility within our district to sell alcohol to our residents. We already have a high crime rate. We are already inundated with at least minimum, that I was able to count last night on short notice, 12 to 15 establishments that sell liquor from beer and wine all the way up to hard liquor, and that includes places like Target and Safeway. And those are all within a two-mile range of my home, which is right off of Auburn and Garfield. We have a high homeless population, unhoused, if you will. They take up residences in front of Circle K, they take up residences along the church, they take up residences by the Dollar Store, which used to be a Walgreens, and the homeless problems at, at the Walgreens drove out Walgreens, so we lost a standalone pharmacy in that area. I do not see that having an additional facility or business that sells alcohol is going to benefit the area in which they want to put it. We would rather see a grocery store without the use of any liquor licenses. And that comes from the people that I've actually talked to within my neighborhood. We are an older neighborhood, and it is not conducive to the well-being and the balance and the tenants and the homeowners that we wish to attract to our neighborhood. Our crime rate is too high, we want a better, we want a better neighborhood. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Supervisor Serna. I enjoyed your Tower Bridge pictures on Facebook.
Oh, thank you.
My name is Mike Baker, I'm the president of the old Foothill Farm, I'm sorry, the Foothill Farms Neighborhood Association. I'm, I'm also the elected school board representative in which this area would sit in. A few months ago, you guys approved a CPAC, basically separating Foothill Farms from the Carmichael CPAC. Thank you for doing that. This is a prime example. To say that the community voted on this is false. There were five members of that panel from Carmichael, zero members on that panel from Foothill Farms. This is a prime example why we came to you and asked you for that separation, and we thank you for that. One of our CPAC representatives, Diane Kiefer, spoke earlier. She agrees, I'm a candidate, I'm going through the process to become the CPAC member. The rest of the Foothill Farms CPAC would oppose this as well. I've spoken to the people that currently sit on the CPAC and the people that are applying to be on the CPAC. We are not against liquor stores. I came up here and spoke on behalf of B Brothers just a few short months ago. They were great neighbors, they were involved in the community, they wanted to be part of it, and they had, and they've proven themselves. So we did end up supporting that. That was something that we don't regret. We have not, as a community, we have not heard from this. They are not involved in our neighborhood. Nobody in our neighborhood knows who they are. We would like someday to get that trust, we'd like to get that respect. It's, right now, it doesn't exist. We would like for you to please follow the sheriff's recommendation and deny this, the planning commission as well, and deny this application. We also would ask that you take in consideration how many stores and venues we have already selling alcohol and liquor in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Harvinder?
Supervisor Rodriguez?
This is a question for staff. There's a letter here that states that the Sheriff's Department would support this project if the conditions were met, but I understand the speaker right now just said that the Sheriff's Department opposed it. Can I get clarity on that?
Yeah, Sheriff's, the Sheriff's letter is how, how you've stated it. They are protesting the PCN unless those conditions are added to the liquor license. But there isn't really a good mechanism in place for staff to confirm that those conditions will be added, because those conditions happen after the PCN is either, is approved, if it is approved. So it's been a little bit difficult to navigate that, but that's what you just said, they're protesting it unless the conditions are added to the liquor license.
Okay, so in this case here, if a condition was added to this where, if, should they get their license, and then those, those conditions are in their license, then it's approved? And if not, then it could be revoked? I, I'm trying to understand a way that if it, if, if this got supported to ensure that the Sheriff's Department's conditions got added, is that how it would be, temporary approval until it demonstrate, until they demonstrated that they, it was completed?
Yeah, we are, we're not involved or consulted when the conditions are put on the ABC license, so it really would be up to the discretion of the applicant and ABC to work that out. And then ABC does reach out to the sheriffs, and sheriffs will provide them the conditions, but it's not guaranteed that those conditions will be added to the license. And there isn't a way for us to condition the PCN to ensure that those conditions would be added.
Supervisor Rodriguez, I may add a bit more to what Kimber's already responded. Staff have been engaged with ABC for many, many, many months, in fact, probably years on this particular issue, to try to figure out a solution, not just for these types of cases, but generally the PCN process as a whole. And ABC has been reluctant to even confirm on a project-by-project basis whether certain conditions that are requested from the sheriff or, or others... conditions that are requested from the sheriff or, or others will be added. They simply will not tell us.
Yeah, that's a bit of a challenge, because you have, you have business owners that want to do business, that we benefit, as a county, we benefit from the business that they do business with. And so, but, in this case here, there's no way to do checks and balance. And so, is that an issue that we can address at some point, so that we can encourage people to do business in California?
I may just jump in here, Dave DeFanti, Deputy County Executive. As Todd had mentioned, we've been talking about this, I think, for years, and this has come up time and time again with these PCN licenses. The very issue that Todd had just mentioned, that we really just have no control, if your board were to approve it, what happens after the fact? And we really, again, have no say in what conditions are applied, or even maybe know what conditions are applied. So, this is a well-known issue. We've tried to hit it again and again with the state, much to, you know, really no avail, unfortunately. But to, one of the original things that you had mentioned early on, as to the sheriff's letter, that is a very standard letter you'll see with pretty much every PCN license.
I was going to call it perfunctory.
It is, yeah. Perfunctory is the right word, where they do generally oppose unless certain conditions are met. There are cases where PCNs need a use permit, and in those cases, we can actually condition the use permit here at the county. And then that gives us a level of certainty that those conditions are going to be imposed, and if they're not followed, then we have some recourse. Whereas, in these scenarios, we just don't have that level of comfort or ability to ensure they're imposed or have any recourse.
So, it, it seems like the issue, then, is on our end, where a PCN does not have the ability to have a condition? And is that something we can control, that can be changed? No?
The answer to your first question is yes. The answer to the second question is no. Because we are, the board in this case is simply making a determination of whether the PCN should be issued. We have kind of brainstormed, not very broadly publicly, but the idea of adding some sort of land use control to these types of uses, but then that could be perceived as counter to the streamlining and, you know, that we're trying to achieve in what is now, or already exists in this case, a general commercial zone.
Excuse me, I'm going to ask the applicant, you can have a seat. We're going to get through our speakers first, and then I'll give you an opportunity after it's done to come back up.
And Supervisor, if I may just elaborate for your edification, the Constitution of California gives the state the exclusive right and power to license and regulate the manufacture, sale, purchase, possession and transportation of alcoholic beverages. And they are also the only entity that is authorized to really impose conditions on a license relating to the privileges to be exercised under the license, the personal qualifications of the licensee, the conduct of the business, or the condition of the premises, which will protect the public welfare and morals. So, when the county, in the past, has made attempts to suggest, or recommend, or even place conditions on PCNs, we have gotten quickly reminded that we are trying to preempt the state's authority. And so, as Todd and Mr. DeFanti mentioned, our authority and our realm is within the land use mechanism. We use our use permit when that is applicable to impose conditions, but other than, other than that, we do not have any authority to impose conditions on the PCN license.
I mean, I, my own personal experience, I, I'm a business owner with the alcohol license, and ABC is pretty top-notch. Like, they are, in my opinion, they are pretty much on top of it. They, I think they do a good job of prevention of minors, you know, accessing alcohol, or businesses that may, you know, oversell to somebody who may be intoxicated. But this one, it brings a challenge, because I, I want to support a business owner that wants to enhance their business. And here, it's, I, I, there's a challenge here, and I don't know, I don't know, I don't know what to do here, so. All right, we'll continue.
Okay. Any further questions? All right, seen none. Madam Clerk, can we continue with public testimony?
Harvinder?
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Harvinder Singh. I own the liquor store, just not too far from their location. And this location, I'm here for 17 years. I see in this location up and down, so many times, and they have making mistake. I think they lost the license back a couple of years ago, I think, two, three years ago. After that, they're still making mistakes. After 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, I heard they're still selling liquor. And I don't know, this is not fair for those people who want to do the right thing, and you are doing the wrong thing, you know, on the wrong side. And I heard a lot of wrong things about it. It's not I'm on the liquor store, that's what I'm saying, but it's from the public, around the people over there. That's what they're saying. They're selling a lot of stuff, different stuff in there, they're not supposed to sell over there. If you lost the liquor license, that means it's done, you can't sell liquor. But they're still selling liquor there. Right now, they're still selling liquor. Those people, they know, they give them some code words, they still sell liquor. When they lost the license, I think they have the liquor in the stock, they want to sell to the public, and they're still selling it. And this, I'm not making this up, you guys, I don't know, ABC is not going over there checking anything, but this need to be, because too many liquor store in the area, way too many. Everybody have to survive. If you're going to open the liquor store every corner, how are people going to survive? Is every store, just on the area there, I think we have 10, 10 stores are selling liquor. It's not one store, it's like 10 stores around there is selling liquor right now. It's hard to survive, and mostly this economy, is you can't survive. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Jesse?
My name is Jesse. I'm across, kind of across the street from this business, and I've been there for almost 17, 18 years as well. I seen ups and downs, as well as Mike said, and Harvinder said. I heard the, all the same comments from all the people, my neighbor, because I know all the family. I, my family grew up with their kids and my kids, you know, they grew up together. So, that place is not safe for the community, because they do not care about the IDs, they got no respect for any, any, any laws. As I said, they still sell liquor. I, I know they, they still sell it to DoorDash or something, people's place order, they still sell it to a DoorDash and other businesses as well. So, I do not, as, there is 10 liquor store, ABC license within one mile radius. And I don't think we need more than 10. It's already too many, and I think that's way too many, we don't need it. There's, I respect that if somebody want to expand, you know, that's pretty good, but you got to respect the law, too, you know? And, but, they got no respect whatsoever for any, any, they just want the money, that's what they're after, just money. They don't care about the law, to, after two, or any age, or any, anything else. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes your public comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Again, I'll give the applicant two minutes, if you want to present any final last words.
So, to address a point that's been made, if you're familiar with the ABC process, we have signed, and we presented that to the board, I hope you guys all have that, that we have signed the petition for a conditional license, which includes all of the sheriff's department's conditions. So, hopefully you have a copy of that. So, the only license we could get has those conditions on it. Once you apply for a petition for a conditional license, they're on there, you can't even try to get them off for a year. There's also been some mention, obviously, by people who are competing, neither of whom, I have to note, said that they have a restaurant, or that they sell food, or that they do anything else other than sell liquor, unlike this business, which has operated now for over three and a half years, selling food. The allegations that they're currently, I mean, it's, it's ridiculous hearsay, if that had happened, I think we'd know about it. And it never has happened, they would never do that. They've been following the law and doing everything they can to be a good, respectful member of the community and have a successful business, and that's what they want to continue to do. So, I emphasize again, the conditions the sheriff's department seeks are on the license, and they will be on the license. That's what we're applying for right now, because we've petitioned for a conditional license. As people have explained, the, the system does not actually allow the ABC to send a copy of the, the petition for the conditional license, because essentially, it's a part of a settlement negotiations of the case. Until a license is granted, it doesn't exist. So, but when it is granted, it will have these conditions on it, there's no question about it. So, I hope that answers that question.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate the conversation, and I thank everybody for turning out today to testify on this matter. Also appreciate county staff kind of rehashing that issue with the conditions, which it seems like we do every time a new PCN comes up here to this, to the board. And I also appreciate, you know, Mr. Baker, you bringing up that this, this was part of the impetus for creating that new Foothill Farms CPAC, because there, there was a lot of fallout about this after the CPAC recommended approval, and it was all by members who don't live anywhere near that area, and, and don't, I think, have a sensitivity to the Foothill Farms community. So, appreciate you, you bringing that up, and, and I, too, am very grateful that we approved the creation of that new CPAC. I am, Mr. Chair, I, I am going to support staff's recommendation to deny the PCN. I, I think that the burden is on the applicant to establish that this is necessary in the, in the interest of a public convenience and necessity. I, I don't see that. I, I really, when you look at the, they're double the baseline in the census tract, and 16 off-site sales licenses within a mile. This is an area I'm extremely familiar with. There are very, very challenging public safety issues in this area. It is well oversaturated in, in close proximity to sensitive uses, and it's an environmental justice community to boot. So, for that reason, I recommend approving staff's recommendation and denying the PCN request.
I'll go ahead and second the motion.
And just to clarify, yes is that we approve the denial? And a no is, okay, yeah, all right.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
All right, very good. Thank you to all the speakers.
Item 55, this is the Zacharias Ranch Mitigation Bank, a board review for rescinding existing Williamson Act contract, 74 AP 035, and simultaneously entering into a new open space easement agreement pursuant to the Williamson Act for a floodplain tidal marsh mitigation bank, consisting of approximately 580 acres, and this is located in the Delta Community. The environmental determination is exempt.
Good afternoon, Leanne.
Good afternoon. I'm Leanne Mueller with Planning and Environmental Review, and this project before you is Zacharias Ranch Mitigation Bank. So, the location of the subject properties is about 1,700 feet south of Lambert Road and to the north of Twin Cities Road. It is also adjacent to the Snodgrass Slough in the Delta Community. So, these properties are zoned for agricultural 80, and they are located immediately bordered to the west by the Snodgrass Slough, and also to the south. And that slough is a tidal backwater system which has connection to the McColty River. You will note that the properties to the east and the west also have an Ag 80 zoning designation, and they're generally used for row crops and vineyards. To the south, again, we have that Snodgrass Slough, open space, and there are some AG 80, AG 80 zoned properties that are used for row crops and habitat. To the north, it is generally zoned Ag 20, and there are orchards and row crops, but I would like to note that at the north tip of that property, it is very close to the Stone Lakes National Wildlife Refuge. And then additionally, further to the south, there is some habitat land that is owned by the State of California. So, it's kind of a mixed bag out there. Okay, I wanted to share this, which is a farmland mapping. And on the left, you can see, this is the farmland mapping that the Department of Conservation prepares. And the dark green is considered prime farmland, which is the best, and then there are also areas of unique farmland, and then farmland of statewide importance. On the right, as you'll see, in 2020, the Department of Conservation started noticing that there were fallow areas associated with that property. So, then what'll happen is, because they are fallow and continuing to be fallow, they will ultimately be downgraded from prime farmland if there's not an agricultural use on those. So, ultimately, in our conversations with Department of Conservation staff, if there isn't agri, active agricultural uses occurring on it by 2026, it would no longer be designated as prime farmland.
Leanne, before you leave the slide, I'm going to, I'm going to geek out a little bit here, because I actually did an internship when I was doing my undergrad work here at Sac State, and I worked for the FMMP program. I used to, I did, worked on the early GIS programming for, for these types of maps. Are these updated, still updated every two years?
They are updated every two years, but what we're finding is that they're on 2024, but really, it's like the 2020 maps that are published right now, so they tend to lag a little bit behind.
Right. So, I think it's important to note that just because we see a snapshot here in terms of the categories, categories of farmland, whether it be unique, or statewide importance, or, or other classifications, based on how that, those lands are used in agricultural rotation, that could change, and it could change hypothetically every two years.
It can, yes.
Okay, so, I, I just think it's worth noting that we're looking at a point in time, we're not looking at a permanency in terms of the use.
Correct. It is a point in time, but I think what we are trying to show is that, given the nature of this property, that it is becoming increasingly fallow due to the challenges, and the state is recognizing that, as is the county, as far as the productivity of the farmland.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So, we would note that this property is currently under a Williamson Act contract, and the applicant, which is Westerveld Ecological Services, is proposing to convert the row crops that are occurring on the site to a tidal marsh for habitat mitigation. Open space in the county Williamson Acts is specifically excluded, excluded as a compatible use, but William Act statute does permit, like, the rescission of a Williamson Act contract and entering into an open space easement agreement, provided that the county takes certain steps. So, the applicant is proposing to rescind that contract and enter into the open space easement agreement to convert it to the tidal marsh. And I would also like to note that our zoning code does permit wildlife preserves in the Ag 80 zoning district, so the entitlement that you are dealing with is that Williamson Act conversion today. So, as I said, this item is a board review for the board potentially to rescind that existing Williamson Act contract, and then simultaneously enter into a new open space easement agreement pursuant to the Williamson Act, so that they can use this site as a floodplain tidal marsh for that 580 acres. So, we did prepare a notice of exemption for this project pursuant to Secu Section 15183 and 15317. So, this is an exemption for consistency with our general plan, so it does allow us to apply mitigation measures. So, we will be applying mitigation measures through an MRP for biological resources, and then archaeological real, resources, including tribal cultural resources. I wanted to share this, which is the site plan for the site, and it would, and it would allow them, and what they're proposing is to breach the existing farmland levy that's along there in two places, and allow it to flood, and then there would be a series of constructed channels and then uplands associated with that. This is a better view of what it would ultimately end up looking like. So, we did take this to the county's Agricultural Advisory Committee, and they did consider the request in September of 2024, and they did vote to recommend approval of the project, but they wanted us to require mitigation for the loss of agricultural land. Additionally, we would note that they submitted a certificate of consistency with the Delta Plan to the Delta Stewardship Council in March of 2025. There was a 30-day public review associated with that, and there were no comments received, and at the end of that time period, they did get a, a And at the end of that time period, they did get a certificate of consistency and that was done on April 21st of 2025. So one thing we would note is that the Williamson Act statute does permit a contract to be rescinded and then they can enter into an open space easement agreement, provided that the Board of Supervisors by resolution finds that the preservation of the open land is consistent with the general plan and that the land is valuable as open space. Staff believes that this finding can be made because the property has been subject to periodic flooding and it has been resulting in diminishing agricultural value of the property. For example, they've indicated to us that they've had to grow less and less valuable row crops associated with it. We would also note that it is adjacent to other preserves in the area, again, Stone Lakes and then to the north and then land that is owned by the state to the south. Lastly, we find that it is consistent with the Delta Protection Act policy P2 and this policy specifically states that the conversion of land to non-agriculturally oriented uses should occur first where that productivity and the agricultural values are the lowest, which the applicant has indicated by the flooding and their inability to grow high-value crops. And we would also note that the Delta Reform Act also establishes a policy of restoring the Delta ecosystem, which this project will do. So therefore, we are asking that the board recognize that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and the guidelines, that you approve the rescission of the Williamson Act contract and then you adopt the resolution to accept an open space easement agreement and then you allow to enter into that open space easement agreement. I can answer any additional questions that you have. And then Hal Holland from Westerveld is here. He has a brief presentation and he can also answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you, Leanne.
Thank you.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I have just a couple of questions and I'm hoping you can answer them, Leanne, otherwise I'll wait and maybe Mr. Holland can.
Okay.
The first has to do with the rescission of the Williamson Act. Because the Board of Supervisors adopts this resolution declaring it to implement a new open space agreement, that does away with the 10-year wait time to negate the Williamson Act?
It does not. So when you enter into the open space easement agreement, it would be for the same time period as Williamson Act, so it would then be on that continuing 10-year time cycle.
I see. So it's considered more or less...
It's like a swap.
Yeah, okay. That's a great word for it. And then my second question is, I know that the previous owner of this parcel was Parker. Did they receive mitigation credits for purchasing this parcel prior to this conversion into wetland space?
I can't answer that question. It'll have to be Mr. Holland.
Maybe Hal can. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none. Thank you again, Leanne. And presentation number two, you're on deck here.
Great, thank you so much. My name is Hal Holland. I'm the Western Region Director for Rest of World Ecological Services. I oversee all of our operations in California. I do have a brief slide presentation. Let's see if we could pull it up. Okay.
Let me see if they have it back there. I didn't have a note for two presentations. Did you send that to us?
Yes.
I hear a lot of voices in the background.
Okay. Yes, staff did send that over once we received it, which was this morning.
Okay, let me just make sure it was sent over to Metro Cable. I'm asking my staff if they can look into it, just to make sure that it was sent over.
It has, I could pretend I am Zacharias. If need be, I don't want to waste your time and I'd be happy to proceed without it. It just has some very good visuals, which help provide some of the context for what I'm saying and elaborates a little bit more on what Leanne was speaking about. So if it happens to show up in my presentation, great. If not, happy to cover it. So thank you very much for this opportunity to talk about the Zacharias Ranch. I'd also like to thank the planning staff, which we've worked extensively with on this project. Maybe to begin, I'll answer Supervisor Hume's question. The Parkers, our understanding is they bought the land purely as something that they enjoyed for going for walks on and enjoyed having a space in South Sacramento and it happened to have an agricultural component to it, but there was no mitigation or other values, no conservation dollars or anything was associated with that acquisition. And that's something that the resource agencies look very diligently into on any project that's going to go forward. So let me start just very briefly, giving you some background on Westerveld Ecological Services. Great, thank you so much. So Westerveld Ecological Services has been around for just short of two decades. We began in 2006 and we're headquartered here in Sacramento, although we do operate in 15 states. And in the past nearly two decades, we've conserved nearly 20,000 acres in California. And we're landowners first. Our key objective is to acquire lands where we can do conservation and restoration and we really feel that we're part of the community. It's essential for us to get to know our neighbors and ensure that our projects fit in within the community. And we will also partner with other landowners when they feel like they've got a vested interest in retaining their property for future generations. Our staff includes ecologists, landscape architects, land stewards, and they really help guide the design and the long-term protection of our sites. And our mission is to secure sites that are going to provide lasting ecological value in different geographic regions throughout the state and the nation. Next slide. Oh, I could do it from here, correct. So one of the key areas of focus for us, because we are headquartered here in Sacramento, is the Casumnes and Stone Lake Preserve. It has the Casumnes River that flows through the center of it. The Casumnes River is one of the last undammed Sierra rivers that flows all the way from the Sierras down to the ocean. And beginning in 1987, there's been an initiative to conserve now over 50,000 acres of land along the Casumnes Preserve. It's a combination of nonprofits, state, local, and federal agencies, and Westerveld is the only private partner within the Casumnes Preserve. Since we started working on projects in 2008, we've added 1,500 acres to the Casumnes Preserve. You can see those highlighted in yellow and they're really filling in gaps and critical linkages that otherwise were not going to be included within that system. One of the key things to note and Leanne mentioned is the Zacharias Ranch Bank provides a missing linkage between the Stone Lakes National Wildlife Refuge and the Casumnes Preserve. And I think that's pretty important for this regional connectivity and for ecological So a key factor in our approach is working with willing landowners. And oftentimes, the landowners, one of the critical factors that have run through all these projects along the Casumnes Preserve is the diminishing agricultural value due to flooding and due to ongoing challenges with hydrology. So the images that you see run a span of time over 15 years and what you can see is the dark signatures on these figures show where we've got elevated groundwater levels or surface ponding water. And that makes it really hard to grow crops. And the last figure in 2024, you could see it's in June, it still hasn't been planted and it's due to that high groundwater level. We weren't able to get crops started on it until late summer. This high groundwater level coupled with earlier rains that have been occurring, if you remember the big rains we had in October just two years ago, have significantly affected the ability to both plant and harvest crops. We've only had two harvests in the past five years and of those, less than 50% of the site was actually producing viable crops. We've tried a range of different crops, including melons, tomatoes, corn, safflower, and milo, and most of those crops didn't come to fruition. More significantly, this site has a problem with flooding. This site has flooded completely six times in the past 40 years. Of that, four times have been in the past 20 years and recently, most recently in late 2022, 23. And this site would still be underwater if Westerveld had not put nearly a million dollars into fixing the farm berm and then pumping the site out. This site is well below tidal level. It's subtidal and with some of the areas four feet below high tide in Snodgrass Slough. And so this really is of very little agricultural value at this point, but it has a potential for very high ecological value and our objective is to do a controlled transition. If this were to be left in its flooded state, it would have no vegetation because you wouldn't get tulies or anything coming up from those deep waters other than invasive plants and it would have significant wind fetch, which would begin to erode the adjacent railroad berm in effect, Reclamation District 1002. So Leanne gave you the design figure. This is the landscape architect's rendering of what would be developed on site. The objective is to do, as I mentioned, a controlled transition whereby we're going to be building berms and benches across the site. We'll be planting these with tulies and we've worked extensively with local tribe Wilton Ranch Ria to get their advice, their traditional ecological knowledge as to what would be appropriate to plant on site. And the goal is to get those plants established over a year and then to breach the site. And with that, we're not only going to be increasing substantially the ecological value on the site, this is recognized as essential fish habitat for steelhead by Noah Fisheries, but it's also one of the first wetlands mitigation banks that's been developed in the Delta in more than a decade. And projects like this provide significant environmental offsets for projects, including Delta's subventions projects, which help protect the levees, and our projects have provided offsets for numerous county projects occurring throughout the region. So we believe that this is the right project in the right location and by implementing this, it's going to be a long-term lasting benefit to the county and to the region, not only through the conversion and the recording of an open space easement, but also as a mitigation bank, it's going to provide long-term funding for stewardship in perpetuity. And with that, I'll answer any questions from the supervisors.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for the presenter? All right, seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have any further public testimony?
We do. We have one person, Gurnell.
If I may ask, before I begin, can we go back two slides really quick?
Try.
See that little clicker there? Mouse clicker? Yeah, I think if you hit that, it'll...
So my name's Gurnell Boeprai from Boeprai Farms and I wanted to express for my family our full support for this project. As you can see, our farm is right there to the west where there's some ponding that's going on on the north side of our field. And we've installed infrastructure to pump it out. We have the pumps to move it, the pipeline to move it, but nowhere to move the water to. That's why we're supporting this project is because we're hoping that this could be an outlet to where we can move our water and continue the productivity of our farm. I know one of the other farmers on the east side of this project, they've gone through much more flooding than we have and, you know, I've seen them lose their tomato crops. We lost our tomato crops once and this has been a pretty big relief that we're looking that, hey, maybe this could be the flood control project that we need to continue our farming operations. So I really wanted to come here today and urge the Board of Supervisors to support this project. You know, it's great land, it's good clay, you know, we can produce a lot of good crops there and you see there's more infrastructure up to the north for storage. So it's a very critical area for our local ag and I really hope that, you know, we can all come together and make this project a reality so we can continue the viability of the surrounding farms in that area. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Sounds like everyone's kind of both blessed and cursed out there with great soils, but too much water in the wrong places. Okay, that concludes our public testimony.
Yes, it does.
All right, very good. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much for those comments because obviously one of the considerations of this that we're considering at the Delta Protection Commission is the impact that restoration projects have, not only on the viability of other farmland, but also on the reclamation districts and paying for the common maintenance of reclamation, you know, private agricultural levees. But I think one of the things that stands out for this piece to me is the gap that it fills between the Stone Lakes Preserve and the Casumnes River Preserve in creating a contiguous habitat corridor. But in addition to that, it creates a nursery, fishery area for salmonids and delta smelt and other things. And so I think that we have to find that balance where we hold up and value agricultural as it persists and protect those lands, but that we do so with the mindset of not only the economic viability for the continuing ag, but also the ecological viability of ways that this is providing that relief valve that was just talked about for high-water events. So I am in support of this and I would move a staff's recommendation. I assume I can encompass all three motions in one, so I would move all three of staff's recommendations.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Sorry about that. I hit the wrong button.
Oh, please vote again.
Vote again, please. Unanimous vote with those members present.
Very good. Thank you. I was going to be disappointed if we didn't hear the word salmonid in the... Okay, Madam Clerk.
Now we're on to county executive comments.
Very good.
Thank you, Supervisors. Metro Cable could throw up a picture for me? That would be great. Why they're doing that, I just wanted to take a moment to celebrate and congratulate our Wellness Without Walls, our W3 as we call it, for their collaboration between primary health, behavioral health, and our heart teams for delivering some vital services to people experiencing homelessness and housing instability. As you may know, and I think you all know, and I'm also a fan of RVs, so...
So we know.
So spent a lot of time in them and I had a chance to tour that one and it was great. But as you know, we've announced a new service expanding the W3 Mobile Health Clinic, our mobile health program. We are now expanding it to not only include clinical health services, but also behavioral health services. So now we have both those that cover mental health and substance health for those people experiencing homelessness. With this new service that we've added to this Wellness Without Walls, we are pretty close to delivering full-person care. Some of the services that we provide include preventative health care, we provide some chronic disease management, we also provide some urgent care, we provide assistance in obtaining health care coverage, some mental health, and now adding mental health and substance counseling, STI testing and prevention services, and also HIV treatment and care. So just to take a second and congratulate them, it's a great collaboration between the behavioral health and the clinical health side of things. And just so you know, just today, they're at Howe Avenue Access on the American River Parkway on Library Vieira. Friday, they will be at Florin Safe Stay. The following Friday, they alternate back and forth. They also go to 3900 Roseville Road, which is the city's safe stay, if you will. So they are also providing services equally, not only in the unincorporated county, but also in the city of Sacramento. And it goes to, again, item number nine that Supervisor Hume brought up earlier. The county does so much in these areas to provide, in that particular case, behavioral health services to kids, but also we do so many things and it goes so unnoticed. But we have a fantastic team out there, still going strong and delivering great services out there. I congratulate them and thank the Board for their support.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. County Executive. Supervisor Rodriguez, we are now on to Board Comments.
Thank you, Chair. I want to congratulate Ernesto Reynoso of Vista del Wago High School in Bolsom on his selection to the Junior Team USA for the 2025 Pan Am Bowling Youth Championship in Watermelon City. As one of just eight athletes chosen by the United States Bowling Congress, Ernesto's back-to-back national titles reflect both his talent and dedication to the sport. We're proud to see a student from our community earning this level of recognition and wish him continued success on the international stage. I also want to express my deepest appreciation to Chief Ken Cusano for his 28 years of service to the city of Bolsom, for more than three decades in the fire service. His leadership, professionalism, and commitment to public safety have left a lasting mark in our region. From advancing firefighter wellness to modernizing fire stations and expanding critical programs, Chief Cusano always led with integrity and vision. It's been a great honor to work alongside him and I wish him nothing but the best in his next chapter of life. And that's it.
Very good. Thank you. Any other members have comments? Any other members have comments? If not, I'm going to be a little long-winded. I do have some comments here. So I guess I'll start with heavy, and then try and progress to light, to end it on a light note. But here's the heavy part. Some may realize that Congresswoman Norma Torres in Los Angeles has recently called on Governor Newsom and state and local law enforcement to have ICE agents identify themselves to local police during what has become, unfortunately, too common here in the state, at least in my opinion, which are these raids that are really challenging our immigrant and refugee populations. Many times, there are suspected non-sworn personnel engaged in these raids. There's some speculation that there's even bounty hunters, and I think we've all witnessed through various media outlets the fact that whomever is involved in these raids, oftentimes they're not identifying themselves, they're not providing names or badge numbers, and oftentimes, they're masked. So what I'm intending to do, so in the spirit of being very transparent with my colleagues and with our executive team, I am considering sending a letter of inquiry to both the sheriff and DA as to how they would intend to verify that ICE agents are actually legitimate federal law enforcement officers and not bounty hunters, as well as to ensure that they're not racially profiling and violating persons' constitutional civil rights. I'm also considering introducing a resolution that would urge county law enforcement personnel to request the identification of anyone alleging to be a Homeland Security investigator, Border Patrol, or ICE agent before arrests and detentions are conducted in Sacramento, and to document incidents of non-compliance. I'll just conclude on this subject. I think some may have seen that in response to the unfortunate incidents that we all saw last week at a South Sacramento Home Depot where US Border Patrol agents engaged in raids, again, to further the Trump administration's intent on what I would, again, in my opinion, say is persecuting unnecessarily our immigrant population, separating families, and otherwise causing chaos and heartbreak when it's and where it's not needed. So in response to that, I have decided to take half of the yearly allocation for TOT for District One and to work with the fuel network to see that they are the recipient of those funds, to provide legal assistance in defense, education, and to ensure that they have what they need to, for instance, offset some of the costs that volunteers encounter in performing some of this work. And I've offered that as not just District One to check a box and be done with it, but to offer it as a bit of a challenge to all of our elected individuals that are serving here locally at the state and federal levels, to dig a little deeper and consider that we have a subset of the people that we represent, the immigrant population, that is really being unfairly targeted. So I just wanted to make that clear, again, in the spirit of transparency as to what I intend to do. So now I will move on to some lighter fare. First of all, I'd like to take a few moments to highlight something very special that's happening right here in the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors chambers. Sacramento County proudly sponsors, as we all know, biennial art exhibitions in the space, and currently featured on the back walls is a powerful and visually stunning exhibit titled "A Culture of Light and Color: The Transcendent Work of Stan Padilla." This will be on view through December 2025. This exhibit was curated under the thematic umbrella of the Royal Chicano Air Force, a groundbreaking collective of Chicano artists and activists founded here in Sacramento. Padilla's longstanding connection to the RCF and his dedication to creative advocacy make this collection not just art, but a cultural offering to our entire community. The exhibit invites you on an immersive journey through culture, symbolism, and visionary storytelling. Rooted in the theme of ancient future, Stan Padilla's work beautifully weaves together indigenous knowledge, spiritual reflection, and luminous creativity. A respected multimedia artist, cultural activist, educator, and member of the Royal Chicano Air Force, Padilla has spent over five decades mentoring youth and creating transformative art that reflects both personal and collective growth. Currently based in the Sierra foothills, Padilla continues his role as an artistic and cultural mentor for the United Auburn Indian Community Tribal School in Loomis. His heritage, both Chicano and indigenous, influence his work, which centers around themes of healing, renewal, and cultural education. Visitors are welcome to view the artwork during scheduled public meetings, and I hope you'll take a moment to experience this extraordinary exhibition. And I also want to, in that same spirit, thank Crystal Bethke, our Economic Development Director, and some of her staff, most notably, because I asked my chief to remind me, Lori Kempz, who has been the art curator for 10-plus years. So thanks to everyone who helps us, not just this time, but always with finding appropriate artists and artwork to grace these hallowed chambers, and it's really kind of selfish, but we are the ones that get to look at this beautiful artwork for long periods of time sometime during our meetings. So thank you to the artists and the folks here in Sacramento County that work with them to bring us this beautiful collection. And then finally, this is Flo Evans' last meeting as our clerk of the Board, and I know we had a bit of fanfare a few weeks ago, noting that she's going to become... She's not going far. She's going to become our county clerk, and I just want to say, as Chair and as someone who has had the good fortune to work with Flo for several years, I don't even know how many years it's been.
About 14.
14 years? Cindy was here up until, what, 2012, maybe?
Yeah, I think it started in 2011.
Yeah, okay. So I'm really feeling like I'm losing my safety net here, especially when I'm sharing and even when I'm not. But you've just been a fantastic presence here to get us through these meetings, and again, I'll just repeat a little bit of what I said two weeks ago, but there's so much that people don't see, understand, and acknowledge that goes on way behind the scenes in preparation for the meetings. We have our staff, great staff, your staff, at the back of the room that are always flanking you and helping us to make sure that we get through these meetings and we don't skip a beat, that we're getting our public testimony when we need it, and that we're putting things on the record the way they have to be. So I just want to, again, wish you a very fond and loving departure, but again, you're not going far, and you've just done a wonderful job. Thank you, Flo.
Thank you so much. I will miss every single one of you.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I just wanted to say I did not work with you for 14 years, or however long that was, but you've been amazing, and we're going to miss you for at least not seeing your face as often as we have otherwise. And then I just wanted to say that Sunday is the Pear Fair. Everybody wants to come down to the Delta, experience a little bit of Delta agriculture. The pears are responsible for $50-plus million in revenue or in product revenue for the county, so come on down, have a piece of pie.
Good reminder. Thank you. All right. If there is no further business before this board, we are adjourned.